Hello, welcome to the Salt Lake City Planning Commission meeting on December 11th. It's a little after 5:30, we're just starting just a little bit late. I want to note the public meeting rules, which is Section D of our policies and procedures, are posted just outside the door of this room with comment cards. If you want to speak on an item on our agenda, please fill out a comment card and give it to staff and they'll give it to us and we can call on you to speak when we're on your item. The first thing we're going to do today is a report of the Chair and Vice Chair. I want to report that Commissioner Anaya Gale has resigned from the Commission and so there will be an opening probably on the Planning Commission at the beginning of the year. So you'll hear more about that if you're interested, you can watch for that. Does the Vice Chair have anything to report?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for the report of the Director.
Thank you. So, I'm sure many of you have heard, but last night the City Council adopted the Jordan River Fair Park zoning and development agreement for the Rocky Mountain Power site. This was something that came to the Planning Commission back in October. And most of the zoning-related items that the Commission heard or recommended were included either in the zoning or in the development agreement. So that includes, there was a recommendation for maximum setback. So that was actually, ended up being included with some exceptions for certain distances of properties and things like that to allow some variations. One of the big issues, if you may recall, was with building height and the proximity to the Salt Lake City International Airport. So the FAA has rules about building heights within certain distances and this property is within that. Initially, the proposal was to try to waive those requirements, which is something we can't do as a city, but that was all addressed in the development agreement as well. So now, anything that is taller than, I believe it's, and it ended up being 63 feet, it's a sloped angle, starting on the western side of that property, all the way to the Jordan River. There's some slight increases in that, but that would be the low end of that. The design review triggers are all, has seen by the Planning Commission. There were a couple, oh, the Riparian Corridor, which was a big issue for, I think, the Commission and the city as a whole. There are the difference, so the Riparian Corridor has different tiers of what can happen within close proximity to the high water line. There was some version of that that was put into the development agreement. So, they didn't fully, they're not going to be subject to the Riparian Corridor overlay details, however, the development agreement includes a replacement for that to address some of the similar concerns that the city has with water quality from development running into the Jordan River. So, there were some other provisions in there, things that allowed existing parking areas to be included, to be temporarily used for other parking areas or lay-down yards, could be used for temporary parking lots. Some fencing provisions to help mainly around the potential stadium where they typically require taller fences for security reasons. And then there were several other, one thing that they asked for is for a gas station on the Redwood Road frontage, which was added to the development agreement, hasn't allowed use, subject to the pending adoption of those rules for gas stations that the Planning Commission saw not to, not earlier this year. There are a bunch of other, oh, the big, the other big thing, one of the community benefits is the inclusion of affordable housing. That was something that the city fought really hard to maintain. And so, there's a, there's both a requirement for, so 10% of all of the dwelling units have to be no greater than 80% of the AMI. And 20% of the units have to be family-sized units. So that, those were two of the key points that the city worked on to do that. And the other kind of big guarantee that the city has is that if there is a, if the stadium is built, there's a Major League Baseball team that plays there, they are restricted from relocating for 40 years. So, it's called the home game covenant, which requires all that to be in place for a 40-year period. With that, the next steps in that is, so the council action authorizes the mayor to enter into that development agreement. So, over the next week or two weeks, we'll finalize that with the mayor and with the Larry H. Miller Group. And I think that was the only update I have. If there's any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer those.
Nick, I have a question of, based on like the gas station issue and like the zoning consolidation. Do we have a timeline for when the City Council may look at those issues?
So, the City Council has held several, a couple of briefings on the gas station proposal, those regulations. And one of the things that we've identified is because it also regulates above-ground fuel storage tanks, there's a lot of different uses that have those for emergency backup. And so, we're trying to make sure that the zoning isn't precluding that. So, my guess is that they'll pick that up in January and, and adopt it once we can figure out how to mesh that with the various building code and fire code requirements for those types of uses. The zoning consolidation will be transmitted to the City Council Monday or Tuesday next week. So, they'll, our anticipation is sometime early in 2025, they'll start that process. So, they've all been briefed on what that includes, so they're all well aware of it. And then, we'll go through their public process, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Our next item is an open forum where the Commissioners can discuss planning, zoning, and general land use items that are not listed on the agenda. We have 10 minutes for this if we need it. I want to start by identifying a part of our policy and procedures that I think is useful for us to think about sometimes, so maybe particularly today. Section E talks about our procedure and motions. Motion should state findings at the beginning of the motion, followed by a recommendation to the appropriate body, and should be concluded with the conditions of approval. So, there are staff motion sheets that are usually provided with our, with all of our items, and those are sufficient in detail to state findings. If we want to do something different, we need to make sure that we follow that rule, which is Section E 33A, that to state findings at the beginning of the motion, the recommendation, and then the conditions of approval if any of those exist. So, thank you. Does anyone have anything else to say during the open forum period?
I do, just really quickly. Just a kind of a framework for this evening. When you kind of come to the mic, please be respectful of everyone's time. Everyone is allowed two Again, the reason why we have to pause for a, the recording, was just that anything that happens needs to be in the public record. So, that's why we had to pause.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to consider now the consent agenda. There are four items on our consent agenda tonight. The first is an extension request for a plan development and design review at 1518 South 300 West. The second item is a design review for a property at 922 West Euclid Avenue. This item has a public hearing. The third item is a planned development at approximately 2222 South Lake Street. This item also has a public hearing. And the fourth item is approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting on October 23rd, 2024, which does not have a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing for those three items that have a public hearing, and in fact, I have a public comment card for one item. This member of the public has asked me to read this comment. This is on the property at 922 Euclid Avenue. "Is the developer willing to add a privacy fence on the west side of the property? In adding five parking spaces off the alley, maintaining the alley needs to be addressed. Would the developer be willing to repair or asphalt the alley between 900 and 1,000 West? Trash is currently picked up on Euclid Avenue. One bin will not be enough for six units. Do you plan on 922 trash being picked up by way of the alley?" Does anyone else want to comment?
Can you please state the name of the person?
Oh, that, that comment was from Kalana Gonzalez. Does anyone else want to speak on those items in the consent agenda that have a public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anyone on the Planning Commission want to have a discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, I'm wondering what's the procedure if we want to, we don't have to remove an item from the consent agenda if we just want to follow up on a question? Or do we?
You can, you can have a discussion about something, but if you want to potentially alter something, then you probably need to pull it off of the consent.
If I want to say that again?
You want to add conditions or something, you probably want to pull that off.
Right. But if we just, if I just want to follow up on those questions for the, I don't need to remove it from the consent agenda.
No, you can ask for follow-up questions and we can...
So, can we get, I was trying to get to the first page and it kicks me out. Diana, who's been running back and forth. Diana, can, can you come up and, for your project on Euclid?
Yeah.
Sorry. You're doing multiple duties tonight. I would, I would suggest if Madam Chair would entertain reopening the public hearing to allow for that prior to any questions to the planner on this topic.
Yes, I will reopen the public comment. Let's have, let's finish up with responses to the public comment on the Euclid Avenue, and then we'll have comments on the other item. Thanks.
No, he is commenting on Euclid, right?
No.
Did you want a presentation on it or just answer questions?
Wait, I'm sorry, sir, gentlemen, sir, are you commenting on 922 Euclid?
No.
Okay. Oh, I heard the 22 and then that's all I heard. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Did you hear the public comment?
Talk about if the applicant, well, is the applicant here?
Yes.
I think the question's...
Let me, let me take the reins back on, on this part of the meeting. We heard a public, did you hear the public comment on that item from Euclid Avenue?
I did not.
You did not, okay.
Sorry, I was talking to someone.
Let me restate the public comment. And your, we have decided to hear a response from your applicant on this public comment. Okay. This comment is from Kalana Gonzalez. "Is the developer willing to add a privacy fence to the west side of the property? In adding five parking spaces off the alley, maintaining the alley needs to be addressed. Would the developer be willing to repair or asphalt the alley between 900 and 1,000 West? Trash is currently picked up on Euclid Avenue. One bin will not be enough for six units. Do you plan on 922 trash being picked up by way of the alley?" We want to provide an opportunity for your applicant to respond to that, those questions.
So, I can answer a couple of those questions. The trash pickup will definitely be off of the alleyway in the back, and they will have one container for the, all six units. Transportation is requiring them to increase their asphalt backup area, so they will improve the portion that's adjacent to their property of the alleyway. The alleyway is pretty much improved, it is drivable.
Thank you. Does your applicant want to make any further comment?
I'm not sure. Is the applicant here? Yeah, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Please.
We have no issues adding the privacy fence on the west side of the property at all.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, one of my questions is, is that something that we would really need to condition to ensure that it happens?
If you don't condition it, there's no guarantee that it'll be required.
Yeah. This is procedural, it's not a reflection that you wouldn't do it. I would move that we pull out this particular item off of the consent agenda.
Are you making a motion to do that?
I feel like we're still working on what the procedures are for consent agendas, so do I have to make a motion to, I thought we had to make a motion to pull it off, yeah.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Okay, there's been a motion to move this item, design review for 922 West Euclid Avenue, from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And it's by Commissioner Berry, and a second by Commissioner Krasik. I'm going to take a vote. Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
And Commissioner Burrows, I'm also going to vote no. So, it, that motion passes though, four to two. So, we'll move that item number two from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And we'll move it at the front of the regular agenda. Okay, so back to the consent agenda. We have a public comment for 2222 South Lake Street. Sir, would you, you have two minutes to, you can approach the podium, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Justin Pratt. I own and occupy a building at 2159 South 700 East. I want to speak in support of this project. I would like to see some development in that area. My concern about it, though, is that when the, the building across the alley was built, that's, that addresses 717 Simpson Avenue. I think it's a five-story, 60-some-unit building. They shut down the alley and they occupied that alley during construction. And my building is at the end of that alley, and we have an enclosure where our dumpsters are, and we need to access through that alley to be able to empty the dumpsters. So, that's my only concern, and I don't know if there's any assurances that it, it wouldn't be shut down or that we would have access through the alley, but that, that's just my concern about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow the previous procedure and ask the planner to respond. The planner on that item is Seth Rios.
Is the question just about what the procedure is in case they do block the alley?
I believe the question's on, will the alley be not blocked?
I'm, I don't know off the top of my head. I do know whenever they apply to do construction work, they have to, you know, apply with engineering and with transportation for traffic control, and I know that's where complaints can be handled, but I'm not entirely sure if it will be blocked or not, if there's any regulation against it in their regulations. I'm not quite sure.
Madam Chair, so anytime construction activities close any sort of public right-of-way in alley, lanes of streets, full streets, et cetera, that is a process that's handled by transportation during the construction process. So...
So they would... Are supposed, the developer, contractors, et cetera, who are doing the work, one, are required to get a permit from transportation and the city's engineering division, and that includes identifying ways when properties have one point of access, like an alley, to service it, how their timeframe, that they're going to be closing it to ensure that there is some access, it's not closed for like a duration of the full day. So it's not really an issue for the planning commission because it's a construction impact mitigation type of issue that's handled during the building permit process.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to add from their website, they have something that says if they receive frequent complaints about a traffic control issue, they're authorized to modify the traffic control plan to resolve those issues. So if it is something that's not authorized by their original review or their plans that were submitted, transportation can modify their agreement to work on the right-of-way.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period now on the consent agenda items.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as modified.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Shear, and a second by Commissioner Mike Christensen. I'm going to continue to call him, that refers to him by two names. We have another Commissioner Christensen, he's not here. Let's have a vote. Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
I will also vote yes, so the consent agenda item passes unanimously, noting that item number two is no longer on the consent agenda. Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to move to the regular agenda, starting with the item number two, design review at approximately 922 West Euclid Avenue. The planner is Diana Martinez, Martinez. You can present this project to us. Thank you.
So this is a design review application. The applicant did not submit a TSA development application.
Diana, you're not sharing your presentation.
Sorry. This property, the subject property, is in the TSA urban neighborhood transition area, and typically, to develop the property, applicant would submit a TSA development review application, which is a scoring process to see whether or not an application would go through the building permit process, which means they would have a score of 125 points or greater. Anything less than 125 points requires review by your board, by the commission, and approval or denial by this commission. The request is for a six-unit townhome multifamily development. It would consist of four two-bedroom, three-bath units, and two one-bedroom, two-bath townhome units. They would all have small side yards on the east side of the building, and there would be five parking spaces, which meets the parking requirement. Staff is recommending approval of the application by the planning commission. This is renderings of it. The top right is looking kind of from the southwest, and then the bottom right is kind of looking from the northeast, yes. Again, staff is recommending approval. If you want to put that additional condition, you know, we'll talk about that, I guess.
The applicant has 10 minutes to make a presentation if you want to. You don't have to take that time, or take as much as you need.
I think what's been presented adequately describes where we're at.
Thank you. I'm going to reopen the public comment on this item. We've heard and discussed that one comment. Does anyone else have something they want to share or ask about 922 West Euclid Avenue design review? I don't see anyone, so I will close the public hearing again. It's time for a discussion amongst the commissioners. Or...
If there's no discussion, I'm willing to make a motion. All right. Stupid glasses situation. And this is for case number PLN PCM 2024-00429. Based on the information presented in the discussion, I move that the commission approve this design review application, coinciding with staff's recommendation, with the following modification. One, that the applicant build a privacy fence along the west side of the property.
I'll second that.
Can I just get a clarification on that? Will that be in front of the parking, or, I mean...
On the west side?
Oh, on the west side, I'm sorry. We're good.
That's okay.
Okay. Just on the property line. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Berry, and a second by Commissioner Mike Christensen. Any discussion? We will do a vote. Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
No, I don't think a privacy fence is necessary.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
I'm going to vote yes, so that motion passes for yeses to two noes, so that design review has been approved with conditions. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us. Our consent agenda procedures are still a little new for us, but we did a good job. Okay, the next item on our regular agenda is a planned development and preliminary subdivision at approximately 1935 South 9th East. I want to outline the possible outcomes for this item. The commission can approve it, deny it, continue this item, or approve it with conditions. The planner is Andy Holka. We're going to ask him to present this project to us.
Give me one moment to pull up the presentation. All right, thank you. So I'll be presenting on the planned development and preliminary subdivision at 1935 South 900 East. You can see the subject property on the screen. We've got a street view and an aerial view. This is a large parcel, just under half an acre, on 900 East, about a block and a half north of 21st South. The proposal is to retain the existing single-family home on the lot and leave that on Lot 1, and then create two new lots for two new single-family dwellings in the rear yard. Both of the new units will be two-story buildings, five bedrooms, and they'll each have a two-car We've got a full analysis of all the requested modifications in your report, but planned development is required to create new lots without street frontage. As a result of the design being kind of built around the existing structure, trying to preserve that, some of the additional zoning standards require modification. I won't go through those all, but there are, in some cases, some of them may require a modification just to one lot, even if the entire development as a whole, for instance, the building coverage, the whole entire development meets, but one of the lots is substandard and requiring development, so just as an example. That's why it's important to consider the project as a single development site to determine if it's meeting the city's goals and providing an enhanced project. So to quickly review some of the city goals and policies, this is providing new housing that will be on its own lot, available for ownership. That helps support some of the city's goals. Plan Salt Lake promotes infill development. Housing SLC supports the increase of housing at all levels of affordability and increasing opportunities for homeownership. Thriving in Place also supports creating more housing with an emphasis on affordable housing and minimizing displacement and segregation. The Sugar House Plan gives some more specific direction about how to treat planned developments. So important to note, the Sugar House Plan future land use map designates this property as low-density residential, five to 10 units per acre. This is three units on just under a half acre, so it's about seven units per acre, fits right in with the future land use designation. Sugar House Plan also gives some direction about reviewing planned developments to ensure that they're compatible with the neighborhood, similar scale with similar features, design features, and that there are appropriate setbacks around the perimeter of the development. In order to approve a planned development, it has to meet one of the objectives of the code. Staff reviewed the application and finds that it meets two of those objectives, to provide housing that helps achieve the city's housing goals, and a project that helps implement the adopted master plans. As we requested public input from neighbors, we did receive quite a few comments expressing a variety of concerns, things like privacy, traffic, construction concerns. One that we wanted to key in on was neighborhood compatibility, because that is a standard for planned developments to meet. We requested that the applicant provide a landscaping plan to address concerns about things like privacy. So they did provide the plan that's on your screen that includes columnar trees and shrubs around the perimeter of the new lots. In total, 36 trees and 84 shrubs are proposed to help provide a little bit of a landscape buffer around the perimeter. So based on the information and findings of the report, we find that it meets the standards for preliminary subdivision and planned development standards. We recommend that you approve the request. Please note that this is a planned development and a subdivision, so you'll have two motions. The subdivision can't be approved unless the planned development is approved, so that will need to come first. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I want to invite your applicant to the table. Please state your name, tell us who you are, and then you can start your presentation. You have a maximum of 10 minutes. You don't have to take it all. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Council, for this opportunity. My name is Colin Strausser, and I'm the property owner and developer here. This project has been at the forefront of my mind for many years. I have owned this property for 10 years, and... Oh, yeah, sorry. I can click.
Can you speak a little more directly into the microphone? It's very hard for everyone to hear.
I apologize. Thank you. Okay, let me just get the slide going here. Okay, so one of the important things in doing a subdivision is your team, and the team that we've assembled here is a team that's worked together on other subdivisions in Salt Lake City and in the valley. And we saw the landscaping plan from John there from Trees by Design, and that was a great guy that I've had do a couple of projects for me, and we've had a lot of interest from the buyers in that type of layout for a yard, and we were really hoping to mitigate some of this structural and just the eye contact points from looking out windows and stuff by putting in this landscape buffer. So it's an important part of our team. The builder, Mark Stevenson, has built with me before, and he's a great builder, and I expect this project to be completed in a timely fashion. The other key parts is I employ an in-house designer to help me with the layouts and the design of these homes, as these are for-sale units at a high price point, and they need to be designed thoughtfully and responsibly. And so with the team of building, the builder and the interior designer, we keep that going, and I think we deliver a very nice product, and I hope to do that here. I also enlisted the help of Warren here, and he's a developer in his own right, and I wanted to make sure that we had a second pair of eyes on this, just to make sure that I wasn't missing anything, or that this subdivision wasn't properly aligned with the goal of creating a healthy, you know, equitable place for single-family for-sale units in Sugar House, which is a hard thing to do. Next slide, okay. So, yeah, so like I said, I've owned this property for 10 years, and I've lived there on and off. I bought it with the intention of developing it at some point because of how big the yard was. The yard is very hard to maintain, but I've done my best. And so, you know, part of this was going through many design processes and many ideas. I've penciled every one of them for the past 10 years, and this one, I think with the utmost confidence, is the best design for this space. And, oh, I wanted to mention that I really have loved the community. I just moved out to my final house that we just got done remodeling after two years this past September, so I moved to community councils, and so it's been... Anyway, it's been a change, but I really have really appreciated my time in Sugar House. And I think this project, this is the house that's going to stay, that's been my primary residence, and a house that is, as you can see, was built in 1899 and is 125 years old, and has, though maybe this picture doesn't show you the true Sugar House bungalow aspects of this house, but they are alive and well inside the house. This is a very, very cool house. It's very custom. It has a large attached garage to the side that fits six cars, and it's a kind of a really multi-use space that's gone through many iterations since I've owned it, and the back garage there that you see on the right there is a detached garage that will have to be scraped in to make room for the homes, and one of the things I wanted to address was that this garage there is closer than the houses that we're proposing. They will actually be another 10 feet behind that. And so nothing on the street facades really from 9th, or, you know, along 9th East will change. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Warren here to have some of the zoning and other technical questions.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to touch on real quickly how this project addresses the city's housing goals and how we've really curated the design in order to make sure it fit well within not only what the buyers would want to see, but also what the city wants to see as well. So one of the most valuable and unique things about this development is that it's providing family-sized detached, single-family homes into an area where we really haven't seen single-family homes in, you know, quite some time. I love how the staff report put it, and they said, "In addition to setting goals related to increasing the housing supply with a focus on opportunities for homeownership, which this development provides, the plan discusses residents' desire for more family-sized housing, saying that among regional peer cities, Salt Lake City has the lowest percentage of family-sized housing units." So, yeah, this is accomplishing something that is hard to do, and we're happy to have an efficient land use with this development. Neighborhood compatibility is always something that we want to make sure we're complying with and benefiting the community with. So all the surrounding structures are the same use of single-family homes, as you can see here. It's worth noting that Sugar House has a unique block face, and there's many homes in this area that are built either near the setback or even, in some cases, on the property line, and this development provides ample room in between with setbacks, so it fits very well within the existing neighborhood. well within the existing neighborhood, and we're, you know, excited of how well the design fits in. Something to note on the site plan here is, so it is three lots across 18,295 square feet in the R1 5,000 zone. So, you know, if there was a choice for this home to be demolished, there would be enough room for three 5,000-square-foot lots. Another thing that I know is of importance to the community and the neighbors is to make sure there's enough parking for the development. Every unit in this design has a two-car garage along with driveway parking, and as mentioned, the existing structure actually has a six-car garage, so you can ample parking for the Just wanted to point out with this that we are requesting an exception to the garage facade of 52% versus the 50% allotment for Lot 3. But as you can see, it is an attractive design, and not only that, but it is 117 feet from the curb, which is basically kind of the goal of the, you know, the goal of the zoning code is to make sure that there's not a garage like right in your face while you're on the street face. So we believe that it still accomplishes the city's goals through that. And then there's Lot 2 there. We just want to show with this that these are very functional homes. I know some people address concerns that these might, you know, not sell or something like that, but, you know, rest assured that we've thoughtfully thought out the design of this, and, you know, as you can see, there's plenty of room for, you know, all the furnishings that you would want, and it's going to be a five-bed, three-and-a-half-bath, single-family home. So it'll be very functional for the buyers and for the community.
You've got about two minutes left.
Yeah. The only thing I wanted to point out with this, with the landscape plan, Andrew did touch on that very well, so I don't see a need to go on with this. And I think that's basically my side of things.
Yeah, I can just jump in real quick. This is the 27th South Street Collective that we did, completed two years ago on 27th South, right off 9th East. And this house, this project required the demolition of one house and the preservation of another. So this is a very similar project to what we propose here today, and, you know, these houses will be in a similar design to these, so this is a good indication of what we're looking to do. So I look forward to answering any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time the commission can pose any clarifying questions. We're not going to discuss the merits of this project or standards, but just any clarifying questions at this time. I don't see any, so we're going to move to the public comment portion of this application. I have several cards. I wonder if Judy Short is here to speak on, from the community organization point of view?
Hiding in the back.
Hiding in the back. So if you're speaking on behalf of a recognized community organization, you get five minutes to speak, otherwise it's two minutes. So we'll hear first from Judy Short, and then Erin Grosso, and then Nick Howard.
I think what bothers me the most is the height, and the five-foot setback on either side is barely wide enough to allow for planting of a tall hedge to give the neighbors some privacy. Maybe the two homes could be moved closer to the middle a bit. These houses are taller than most anything around. Maybe an option is to eliminate the basement and put the first level a half a story below grade, as houses used to be built in the 50s and 60s. The first level could extend a few feet more on the east side to make up for some of that lost space. Maybe instead of all the windows high enough to view the neighbors' yards and take away their privacy, you could use windows that open that are skylights, so they still get the light in the air, but they're not peering into the backyard. The garage could still remain at ground level. While the homes could have as many as five bedrooms, there isn't much space for children to play in those small yards. The driveways and access to the garage seem very awkward, with a lot of maneuvering to get out to the street. I think people who are going to buy these houses ought to try that before they sign on the dotted line. Another option would be to build just one additional house, since five feet below ground at the first level, but it could spread out a bit so there's some yard and play space. And by doing that, instead of two stories, the neighbors don't lose all their privacy. Skylight windows would still be a great option on the upper story. Occupants still get light and air. I think the planned development standards are poorly written. To require a project to only comply with one standard to be accessible is ridiculous. Infill developments are not commonly found in Sugar House. This design does preserve the block face, but does little to preserve anything for the abutting neighbors. An infill project should benefit the neighborhood by adding housing, preferable affordable housing, but not by making the neighborhood mad. I think the planning commission should table this proposal and give Mr. Strausser some time to work on a design that's more palatable to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clarify that Judy Short is a member of the Sugar House Community Council. That's why she had some extra time. The next speaker is Erin Grosso, then Nick Howard, then Matt McLaren. Please state your name. You'll have two minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Erin Grosso, and we are neighbors to Mr. Strausser next door. Actually, our house is up on that presentation to the immediate right. Thank you, Judy, for your comments from the community. We did, my husband and I, write in just our concerns for the development of these two additional lots. Our main concerns are primarily focused on all of the traffic and parking congestion that is already occurring along 900 East right now. We're also concerned about the construction noise and public disturbance the scale of this project would bring to our immediate neighbors and ourselves. And three, we're also worried about such an impact of this development to the foundation and stability of really old homes in the neighborhood. Our home is over 100 years old, along with many others on that block, and we would like to understand what the impact to our foundation and stability could be with such a scaled project. I just want to make a comment that we are already seeing year-over-year increased traffic on 900 East. Cars continue to back up at rush hour, and often people are parking outside of our house that restrict our ability to come and go with ease. Adding on additional two units for five people would be 10-person occupancy increase, already in addition to the main home. I'm concerned about what that type of congestion would bring to us. I'm also concerned with the scale and time this project will take. I'm sure this is going to be anything along six months to a year, and that type of just noise, traffic, construction is a hindrance. Both my husband and I work from home, and we already have challenges with keeping kind of a quiet workspace. I would hope that if construction were allowed, it would be permitted within standard hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick Howard, then Matt McLaren, McLaren, and then Justin Pratt.
Hi, my name is Nick Howard. I live at 1921 South, 900 East, directly north of the proposed project. In its current form, I am opposed to this project, so is my wife and my daughter. Our main concern is the density of the project. It's going to be very tight. I'm concerned I've got five feet of space between where these houses are going in. I appreciate the landscaping you're proposing, but what are you going to do if a sprinkler breaks back there? How are you going to fix that between those trees? There's no space to do anything. I'd encourage you to go back to the drawing boards, come up with something a little smaller. As you said, these are going to be high-priced homes. This is a medium to lower-class neighborhood. I'd like to see it kept that way. It won't be million-dollar homes, this neighborhood being built. I'll keep it short. I agree with what Erin and Judy have said as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt McLaren, and then Justin Pratt, and then anyone else who wants to speak on this project can get ready. State your name.
Yeah, good evening. Matt McLaren, I apologize for my atrocious handwriting on there. So I live immediately to the east of the proposed development. Couple things real briefly. I want to thank you for providing a forum to give feedback. I think that's getting a little more rare in this day and age. And I also want to call out Andy, the planner, for orienting me to where the zoning laws live, which were referenced in the developer's application. I know more about this stuff now than I ever wanted to, so thanks for that, I think. But that being said, I want to respectfully disagree with his recommendation to allow this development to go forward in its current state. Frankly, my concern and my immediate neighbors is the size and the scale of this development. Over 28 feet, size is not compatible with the neighborhood. To the previous speaker's point, our houses are 100 years old. They're single-story, small brick bungalows, and these would tower over the neighborhood. I waded through all of our neighbors' comments, excluding one. They were all opposed, but the opposition is reasonable in that that is a very large lot my neighbor, Mr. Strausser, has, and, you know, if you've got an ailing mother-in-law or you want to build an ADU back there, I think that's totally reasonable. You could do that without all these waivers around lot size, widths, and setbacks and all those kind of things. I may be a little jaded, but it just seems like they are trying to extract as much value from that property as possible by getting all these waivers done. The scale is totally out of scope with the neighborhood. This isn't a walkable development. It's not an affordable development, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time. Cheers.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this application? You can approach the microphone if you do. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment on this item and quickly summarize the things that we heard. There's questions about the height of the proposed buildings, the setback accommodations, the effect of construction on the age of neighboring properties, traffic increasing, construction nuisance, the increase in density, and a difference in perceived scope of what's there and what's proposed. Now that we're going to allow the applicant to respond to the public comment, if you want to, just have a couple of minutes.
I appreciate a lot of my neighbors coming out this evening and voicing their opinions, and I've been working with them as much as I can on mitigating some of those concerns. I want to say that the zoning allows for a 28-foot height of a dwelling, and we'll probably be slightly under that, so the height is 28. The scale of this project is interesting because everything's about location, and in this location, we're really in everyone's backyards. And so every primary dwelling that is here, you know, that you can see in this picture is pretty far away from the dwellings. Nick, who spoke earlier, the neighbor to the north, had a concern about it being five feet off and going up two floors. At that portion is the garage portion, and it will not have a second story. And then, and only towards the very end, right there, yeah, of his property, at the backyard, would there be a two-story building. And because of the way fire code is and stuff, we might have to tier the building, so we'll lessen that impact and probably provide more sun. And that's working with fire through the comments that they've already provided. But, you know, you can see a lot of the structures along here are garages. I don't know the percentage of garages that abut my property, but it is a few, and they all are mostly on either a one or zero setback. And so this property is very cocooned in the middle of the block. A long time ago, it looks to me like there was an alley, and this property was granted that land in favor, and that added another 14 feet, if you look back. So we have 180 feet of depth to this lot, and, you know, and I want to get back to the comments that were made, but one of the comments was, "Families, families will love these. This is what families come to Sugar House wanting and not finding, and this will provide that. This is a family-sized, and it's very difficult to build single-family detached family-sized dwellings and find any space for them. This is a large lot, as everyone agrees, and is a very rare thing. To put an ADU on this large lot would be an underuse of the land. ADUs could be put in almost every single one of my neighbors' backyards, except for maybe two." And so there are ample opportunities for that type of housing. This is one of the opportunities where we have to build single-family detached for-sale homes that are big enough for a family.
Okay.
And so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go into executive session, which means that the commissioners can discuss this project, make motions, and make a decision. I want to, in particularly, draw our attention to the attachment D, which is zoning standards, E, preliminary plat standards, and F, planned development standards. So I want to kind of direct our comments and questions and any kind of suggested conditions to kind of address those standards.
I have a question on your lot layout, Andy, and when I enlarge it, the numbers are fuzzy, so... I'm wondering on this five-foot setback, which is one of the exceptions being asked on Lot Number 2, as it faces west, what is the actual distance between the buildings? I think it's larger than five feet, but what is it?
Between...
Lot 2 and Lot 1, and we have a proposed five-foot setback, but I'm trying to see what the actual distance is between the buildings, but it's, the rendering won't crisp enough for me to read it.
You're asking between Lot 1 and then the, in this image, it's Lot 3, some of them, that breaks off, but...
Lot 2.
But Lot 2 in my image. I believe it's five and five, right there.
I can help out a little bit here. So if you look what's labeled Lot 3 here, you see on the left side...
No, it's Lot 2.
Yes, it is. These got switched up. It is, this is Lot 2, but so Lot 2 has a five-foot side setback. And to answer your question about the distance between the properties, so between the existing structure and lot, what is correctly Lot 2, that is 10 feet, and then for Lot 3, that distance is 25 feet, because that accommodates the drive-by.
So you're telling me this distance is 35 feet in reality?
That one's 10.
Now, this is what I'm asking right now.
That one's 10.
That one's 10.
Yep.
So it's five-foot setback, is that from building to building?
Building to lot line.
That's what I'm, what I'm asking is, what is the distance between the proposed building Lot 2 to the existing building on Lot 1, because I can't read the numbers?
It's 10 feet. It's a five-foot setback because there's property lines that are drawn here so that, you know, there's no HOA or anything like that.
So to clarify, are you saying it's five feet from the proposed west side of the building, which would be the garage of Lot 2, to the existing back of the building of Lot 1? That's what I'm trying to hone in on.
The total distance between them is the buildings, not the property line? Yeah, and then the property line splits that in half, so it's...
Five feet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, Andy, I have another clarifying question on the driveway. Does the subdivision process require that the shared driveway automatically have an access easement recorded?
Yes, and easement is...
I just wanted to double-check on that. Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes, of course, sorry. Okay, so I would like to make a motion on PLN PCM 2024-00943, 900 East, collective planned development. Based on the information presented and in discussion, I move that the commission approve this planned development application as recommended by staff.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Krasik and a second by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion?
I just want to point out that the planned development conditions, just one of them have to be met, and they clearly... them have to be met, and they clearly have been, at least one of them, met, so in this particular case, we don't have a lot of flexibility.
Thank you. We'll start voting with Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
I'm not supportive of some of the setback reductions that are being requested, so I vote no.
Commissioner Mike Christensen.
Yes.
I also will vote yes. So, the plan development is approved with a 5 to 1 vote.
I'm ready to make a second motion. I motion that PLN PCM SUB 2024-00146, 900 East, collective preliminary subdivision.
Can you restate the number?
The number is PLN PCM, PLN SUB 2024-01146. And this is for the subdivision of the lot, and based on the information presented and discussed, I move that the commission approve the preliminary subdivision application as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Krasik, and a second by Commissioner Mike Christensen. Any discussion? Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows, me, I will also vote yes, so that preliminary subdivision passes unanimously. And that's it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a plan development and design review at approximately 855 South, 200 West. If you wish to speak on this item, and you haven't submitted a comment card yet, you can do that, there are the door to this room. The planner is Olivia Svetko. Let me outline the possible actions here. We can approve this request, deny it, continue it, or approve it with conditions.
Good afternoon. This evening, I will be presenting to you a design review and plan development request at 855 South and 200 West in the Central Ninth community. The plan development request is for a reduction in the front yard setback from the required five feet to zero feet, a reduction of the side yard setback on the north side from six feet to three feet nine inches, and a reduction of the side yard setback on the south side from the required six feet to zero feet. The design review request for this project is a reduction of the required active ground floor use requirement from 75% of the street-facing facade to 0%. Staff is recommending approval of both the plan development and the design review, with the conditions that the applicant continue working with fire to resolve the required clear access path around the proposed structure, which I'll cover a little bit later, and that a lighting plan be submitted at the time of building permit. As I mentioned, this project is 855 South, 200 West. It is directly across the street from the 900 South track station, and kind of kitty-cornered from the spy hop building, kind of the landmark of the area. Before I get into some analysis, a few quick details about the proposal. This project is five stories high. The ground floor use is a residential lobby. This proposal features 35 micro-units, and each floor features a shared balcony and laundry facilities, with a mailroom and bike storage in the basement. This development has no parking minimum required. It's in the transit parking context, and it is proposing 20 bike stalls. So, I'll cover the plan development first. In order to be approved for a plan development, an application must meet a purpose statement of, in the plan development section. It has to achieve at least one of the objectives outlined, and demonstrate why the modifications are necessary, and must result in a more enhanced product than would be achievable through application of the base zoning standards, which in this case, sorry, is FBUN2. I'll just go over this one more time. The request tied to the plan development is a reduction in both side yard setbacks, three feet nine inches on the north, zero feet on the south, and a reduction of the front yard setback to zero feet as well. You don't have to read all of the things on the slide. This project meets the objective of implementing a adopted city master plan. There are quite a few principles and objectives that this proposal meets. Most notably, this project makes use of a more narrow parcel for infill development that's consistent with the evolving character of this block pattern, and provides housing directly next to some public infrastructure of tracks station. So, this lot is 33 feet wide. The required setback is six feet on each side, leaving a 21-foot-wide building envelope, which is pretty narrow. This is a, this is pretty standard for the FBUN2 and FBUN1 districts. I've highlighted some properties up on the screen that are under 35 feet wide. Allowing a reduction in the side yard setbacks will allow infill development that's consistent in scale with other developments on the block face. Without the reduction in side yard setbacks, this lot would likely be combined with a neighboring lot for a much larger-scale project. The other request for plan development is for the front yard setback. This project is one of a series of three buildings, two of which were, had building permits submitted before our recently adopted changes to the FBUN2 front setbacks. So, they were permitted to go up to the zero lot line. Allowing this project to go up to a zero lot line will allow this project to stay consistent with its sister buildings, but in order to address the community's concerns and desire for more green space and more breathing room on the street, the applicant has proposed 500 square feet of a live vine-green wall, 1,064 square feet of shared green space, shared with the development to the north, and 375 square feet of planted area in the front of the building, between the building and the curb. All right, so next, the other component of this is a design review. The standards of approval for a design review, these are required for any modifications to design standards, which are outlined in 21A37. That includes any modifications to the active ground floor use. So, design reviews must meet the intent of the underlying zone and comply with applicable standards outlined in this chapter. So, again, the request here is to reduce the required active ground floor use from 75% of that street-facing facade to 0%, because this lot is more narrow, and as I mentioned, a part of a series of three buildings. The applicant has offered maximizing ground floor transparency, balconies on 200 West, facing 200 West, that live-green wall, and a decorative metal facade, all designed to activate and engage the street. This is a rendering of the other two sister buildings you can see here. The building directly to the north includes 865 square feet of retail space that the applicant anticipates will be patroned by the residents of the proposed development. One of the comments we got back during department review for this project was that buildings that are over 30 feet high need an aerial fire apparatus access with a clear path of 20 feet. The 200 West, right along this property, is 17 feet wide from the tracks lane to the parking lane, and in order to meet that clear path of 20 feet or greater, two parking stalls along 200 West may need to be removed. This is something that the applicant is currently working through fire with. It's not a direct result of the plan development or the design review request, but, as I'll touch on in a little bit, parking, public parking in this district is something that the community has expressed that there is a need for more of, and they want to see more parking, so this is an item that may warrant some discussion. Fire is also requiring a approved route 10 feet wide around the entire exterior of the building. This is something the applicant is also working with fire through, and they may need to enter into an alternate means and methods approval with the fire marshal. I touched on this a little bit, but the public comments received were, many of them were related to parking. The community feels underparked, and this was, this was the most common comment. Other comments were in relation to a reduction in the active ground floor use. Some felt it may increase crime or decrease activity on the streets. It may result in decreased amenities for the communities, and some felt that more residential units should result in increased amenities. There were several comments in relation to the decreased setbacks. Many felt that it would create a loss of human scale and breathing room on the street, and may exacerbate the existing heat island effect. Other comments received that were not related directly to standards were that many were against the size and, size of units and density of the project. Many felt they were too small and may create a high turnover in residential. So, next steps for this project. If this is approved, then the applicant will need to comply with any conditions of approval set. All departments' comments would be required to be met through various reviews, and any major modifications to the plan would require them returning to planning commission. If this is denied, the applicant could develop the property according to the FBUN2 standards without modifications. The building would be required to meet setbacks, and the design standards would need to be satisfied, including the active ground floor use, and the development review would be handled administratively. Staff is recommending approval of both the plan development and design review, with the conditions that the applicant continue to work with fire to resolve the required clear access path, and a lighting plan be submitted during the building permit phase. And that's all I've got, but I also have the applicant here this afternoon.
Thank you. Let's have the applicant come up and state your name, give your presentation. You have 10 minutes, if you need that much, but it's not required.
Well, thank you, commissioners. I'm John Lee.
Okay, can you hear me? Great. I'm John Lee with Dot Architecture.
Maui Lanham with Dot Architecture as well.
So, thank you all for your time tonight. I will try to not repeat things and kind of go quickly, I know you have a long night. So, this is our project. It's essentially started off as three separate buildings. What we ran into was, the first building is kind of a mirrored version of this, so we wanted to get all the city comments back, so we could address those all at once, and then get through the permitting process on this building faster. That backfired, because the zone changed during that process, which made this building unbuildable in its current state. So, some of what we're asking for are those setback reductions to revert back to the older version, because this was allowed, and we already have a permit on a very similar building for lots up. So, as you know, it's very close to transit, which was why we felt like this was the type of building that would fit well into this community. The design diversity in this community is one of the best in the city, and I think this small infill is kind of part of what that creates, that life of this neighborhood. And we have run into, with this project, kind of studying the larger neighborhood, and some of the issues that may come up from these zone changes. So, all the dark blue lots are under 50 feet wide, which may result in them needing the same type of process to be able to build anything on these sites. And I feel like the original FBUN2 was really designed for this neighborhood, because they're so small, so many small lots so close to transit. And so, that's why we were a little concerned with seeing this amount of changes. The lighter, mid-blue is 75 to 50 feet, so there's quite a few lots that are going to be very difficult to develop in the future. As our building stands, we originally wanted to combine the two lots and do a bigger building. The neighbor likes their duplex and doesn't want to join this development, and so, we moved forward with a single-loaded corridor design, where we created this kind of zero lot line, so they can do a similar development in the future, and kind of fill out, so it looks like a larger building, but in reality, it's two small buildings. So, that's kind of the nature of this design. We wanted to create that public space in the front of the building, so we created that green wall, and the entire front of the building are accessible balconies to every single floor. So, if you combine all of our outdoor space, we're required to have 10%, and we have 65% of the required amount. We designed this holistically, and we did get some great feedback from the community council, so one of the, so one of the things we wanted to do was to add more artwork. So, we did turn the corner with the screen wall doubling the size of that for the green wall portion, and added a piece of artwork. The concept is, it's a leaf pattern, and an insect has eaten away at the railings to create the openings, and so we added a little bug to the artwork. And then, I'll kind of go through. So, basically, we designed these two buildings together, and there is that space between, so there's a 10-foot-wide courtyard in the middle, little over 1,000 square feet of outdoor space on the ground floor. And what we did is, in the middle here, there was, there's a retail space, and we made that 12 feet deeper than is required, to help provide that extra retail space, because our site is so narrow, you wouldn't really have an entrance to the building without eliminating that. And if we did provide the depth, we would lose 15% of the units, which was kind of going against the master plan and having that density in this neighborhood. So, we did try to allocate for that. The other thing with the setbacks are, we wanted to create this pattern of pushing in and out with the facades to create a better pedestrian experience, and we achieved that by keeping the stair tower in the center of the yellow building more prominent, and then pushing the two sides back, and then our building comes out again. You would lose that if we had to push the building further back. You would lose that if we had to push the building further back. We also provide 15, sorry, 12 feet in the back of the building for Transformers trash and other setback requirements. So we're kind of squeezed from all sides. And this is a view from the, the south. Eventually, there'll be a similar building to ours in this location, but for now, we wanted to provide public art. And when it comes to parking, I know that's a big issue with everyone. We are providing 170% of the bicycle parking that's required, but there is no vehicle parking that's required for this property. When it comes to the fire question, we are working with fire. Let me just jump to that. I created an extra slide. So we can accommodate the fire requirements if we use the train track, which if there's a fire, there shouldn't be a train. Fire department is pushing back saying they don't want to block the train track and they want to remove the cars. But we meet all the requirements that the code states to fight the fire while maintaining parking. And so we're in negotiation with them. And that's our presentation.
Thank you. It's time for clarifying questions if anyone on the commission has a question for the applicant or staff.
So John, you have two buildings that are planned there. What's the status of the other building?
They're all permitted. We're ready to start construction. We're waiting on this one so we don't have to do it twice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the public comment portion of this. If there's a speaker here from representing the Central Ninth Community Council, we can hear from them. They'll have five minutes to speak. Otherwise, are you from the community council?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please state your name and tell us who you are.
Yeah, I'm Doug Flagler. I'm the chair of the Central Ninth Community Council. Thank you guys for your time and your service for the city. I'm going to start by reading Julie Addage, who is one of our council members, comments. She lives right next to the property and she just had to step out for another engagement. So I'll read her comments first. My name is Julie Addage. I live at 877 South 200 West, just south of the property in the Arlina. I am a member of the Central Ninth Community Council and also serve on the SLC Board of Adjustments. I'm also a board member of the HOA for the Arlina. The Addage fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me, is what brings us out. I appreciate the city's focus on new development and zoning, but unfortunately, the planning department doesn't care or understand the intended consequences of FBUN2 zoning standards. The ambiguity of what is, what ifs are concerns to me. The street level activation is contingent on a series of three buildings. They are undergoing permanent permit approval and they must be constructed. The staff recommendations for the applicant to continue working with fire to resolve the required clear access path is too vague. Our community is dealing with these concerns from the Slate Apartments over on Washington Street. Our desire is to create a more open space. 375 square feet of planned area and vines covering facade, green trellis, do not constitute green space. What happens when the vines die and our community is forced to deal with the absentee landlord? The solution is not usable and is weak and the developer regularly uses this to meet standards. We want more. The entire south elevation of the wall, of the building is a blank wall. With, with the increased density and lower cost units, more active management is needed. What is the plan for vetting tenants and managing the property? Will the owner be part of the community? What is their long-term commitment to being a good neighbor? And that's the end of her comments. I will start with my comments now. So I'm chair of the Central Ninth Community Council. I want to start off with saying I am not against density or transit oriented development in the neighborhood. That's a reason I moved into the Central Ninth area. But once again, we are talking about a project wanting to change the zoning laws that govern the Central Ninth area. Salt Lake City just recently adopted new zoning standards for the area and already we are talking about changing those zoning standards to meet the needs of a developer. In my view, the development has not demonstrated the public good that would warrant changing those governancees. The residents will have a blank five-story wall that will be facing the outside of this project and will be greeting residents or people who are using the track stop and coming into our neighborhood will see a blank five-story wall. We should never be planning on this assumption that the neighboring property will be developed and that there will be something there blocking that wall or covering it up. I also want to bring up that all of the windows facing into this project, there will never be any sunlight pouring into those units. They will be more likened to the tenement buildings of the 1900s that used to fill New York City. When we talk about building at any cost, Central Ninth feels those costs. We also are very concerned about the removal of public parking for private development. This has happened many times in our neighborhood and is continuing to happen. I know it is something that the city needs to address, but it is something each of these projects needs to be looked at. It is kind of an equity issue. When you're telling neighbors that rely on their cars for, to get to their jobs, they work swing shifts that don't align with public transit, they need to be looked at and we need to be considering those people when we're developing these projects. Also hearing that vines will be a part of green space is a bit hard to hear in an area that has been dealing with a lot of serious heat island issues. We would like to see trees put into our developments and those setbacks to actually have some green space. Going up to the front property line doesn't need to happen to continue with this project. We could easily put some trees there that would help shade the neighborhood and provide shade for the entire community. We thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Annette Wheeler. Then we have Mike Wheeler and then Julie Atig. You'll have two minutes. Please state your name before you make your comments.
Okay, I'm Annette Wheeler and live in Central Ninth. We bought our home on Jefferson Street in 2013 and we met with the planning board several times regarding the building code parameters and restrictions. We have a lot the same width as the lot that's being continued now and with the same setbacks. And even though it very much impacted what we were able to do with our lot, there was no wiggle room for us. As single-family homeowners, we were strictly held to the code requirements, including setbacks and limitations on the size of the ADU that we wanted to put on our own property. There was zero leniency even though we were adding a rental unit to the neighborhood. In contrast, the city planning commission, building officials and the RDA continue to wink at current building code height restrictions. As a result, the parking issue has increased dramatically over the past 11 years because of the many high-rise, high-density micro-units that are coming and continuing to come with zero parking. If that's going to continue, I would recommend that there be something added to the code that in those zero-parking apartment buildings, there is signage so that when prospective renters enter the lobby, they recognize if you have a car, you probably shouldn't rent here. There's also an impact on the businesses where they have employees that need to park longer than two hours. And when the permit along, when the permit parking along Washington and Jefferson takes effect, that will create a problem for those business owners' employees.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Wheeler. Then we have Julie Atig and then Amy J. Hawkins.
I'm Mike Wheeler. With my wife and I live on Jefferson Street in the Central Ninth District. When we moved there and bought, purchased the home back in 2013, it was very clear from the city that the FBUN2 applied to the end units on each street and the FBUN1, FBUN1 was for all of the rest of the property in the area. What's evolved, and that's based on what the city planning commission has allowed, is moving the FBUN2 to really take over that whole area. That's happening on all of these projects. It's happened almost totally along Washington Street now and it will happen on Jefferson Street as well. So what I see happening is squeezing all of the single-family homes out. The city is allowing micro-units, which are 200 or 300 square feet max with no parking to be set up there. So what I'm seeing is the city planning commission is fine with this. That's the way it wants to be. And there's really no consideration for anybody that lives on Washington Street. We've stated these over and over and over again, but it continues, the planning commission continues to allow it. The height restriction, they, they already know that it's, that the fire department's not going to allow that five-story building to be built without taking those two parking plates out, places out. It's happened on, with the Slate Apartments on, on Washington Street on the south side and it will happen on this as well. And we're already maxed out on parking. It's already hard to park. And I, I sense though, from what I see and what's being approved, is that the planning commission really doesn't care about the, the people that live on Jefferson and Washington.
Thank you.
I hope you disapprove of it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Julie Atig, then Amy J. Hawkins, then Cindy Cromer.
Hi there. My name is Amy J. Hawkins. I apologize Julie had to leave. I'm here tonight as a fellow neighbor. I live a block south of the ballpark, but spend a lot of time walking around Central Ninth because literally all of the coffee I consume every day comes from Blue Copper Coffee. So I've spent a lot of time as a pedestrian in that neighborhood. Also, since the Central Ninth Community Council formed in 2018, I've either attended or even had the honor to co-host about nine out of 10 of their meetings. So I'm part of the conversation. So I can say from experience that all of the new micro-unit buildings with a lobby as their ground floor use are completely dead space. And that's not what we wanted out of form-based zoning. No matter how many people are included in any kind of rendering, you may see, it just doesn't happen in real life. Central Ninth is the living experiment in form-based zoning for Salt Lake City. We know that this zoning is going to be put in motion in other areas of the city, including ballpark. If we continue to look past the requirements of form-based and other new kinds of zoning, particularly the elements that aren't just height and density, but ground floor activation, the kinds of elements that are supposed to make the form work for the neighborhood, we're not actually testing the new zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Cromer. And then if you want to speak but haven't submitted a card, you can line behind Cindy.
Hi, my name is Cindy Cromer and I don't live or own property in this neighborhood, but I feel compelled to speak against these living green walls. They don't work in this climate. The first one I saw was at the Lotus on South Temple and in the planning, the landmarks commission allowed that green wall at the front of the Lotus in exchange for a reduction of front yard setback. That was apples and oranges as far as I was concerned. And the green wall has not functioned well. It looks badly most of the time. I don't know a property manager who wants to take care of a green wall. I've looked at them comprehensively in the areas close to me, in East Liberty Park, in the downtown and in Central City. Our climate is not conducive to green walls. They should not be substituted for required landscaping. It is a fantasy to think that they will work where our climate is excessively hot in the summer and excessively cold in the winter. And they just use water and look dead most of the time. This is a fantasy. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this application? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this application and summarize the things that I heard during the public comment. There's concern about the lack of, lack of street activation, reverting to old standards, concern about blank wall design, removing public parking for a private project. Several comments were underwhelmed with using vines as green space and concerned about previously, previous leniency or lack of in decisions about this zone. I'm going to give the applicant a couple of minutes to respond if you want to do that.
Yeah, I, I unfortunately disagree with a lot of the comments. I feel that, you know, this zoning has made Ninth what it is. It's very walkable. It's small infill development instead of very large development, which becomes very dead for a community where this is, I think, a lot more engaging. We are providing a lot of landscaping. We do have trees that we're adding to the front. I believe there's at least three trees and then there's other larger plants spread throughout. And we have a landscape plan that's been approved for, for both buildings. And all I would say is we really treated this as one development on two lots to get that walkability and to have that retail that services both buildings, so.
Thank you. Now, the planning commission can discuss the project, make a motion. I want to note again that attachment D, E and F of the staff report outline the standards that we need to reference when making our decision.
Do you, can you just explain to me really quick how the windows work for this number of units that you have? So I, I know you've got the balconies on the front and then presumably you have units behind those balconies. How does the kind of window function?
So they have a central window with a sunscreen around that. And that's helped there to kind of integrate some of the mechanical equipment that's coming out of that side of the building. So it's all kind of one piece, so it kind of hides some of that messy stuff that you usually see.
Okay, but it's like light coming in from the top?
Yeah, let me see if I can find a picture. Yeah, so it's these portal elements, but yes, there would be light coming in from the top. It's a 10-foot wide corridor courtyard space between.
Thank you.
My question is for staff. If there, is there precedence in our city for, tell, this property owner does not own the parking spaces that are on the street, do they?
That, that is correct. That's public parking. That's part of our right of way.
Is there precedence for the city deciding to say no parking here in order to accommodate fire? Is that a possibility? Is there a threat of that?
I may lean on Nick a little bit for this one.
Yes, that, that has happened. In fact, you heard testimony from residents in this neighborhood that have had it happen with development. So the fire department can order that on-street parking to be removed if they feel like it negatively impacts their ability to respond to an emergency. When they do that, they typically do that in conjunction with the transportation division. And collectively, those two entities make that decision.
Is there any effect that the planning commission could have on making, making sure that does happen or doesn't happen? Is there a condition that we could say these parking spaces are not to be removed or is that completely outside of the scope of and scale? Is it not germane to the standards?
Well, I think you'd, you'd have to read those standards and I know that the staff report lists several of those standards that deal with mobility-related types of things. And so the purview of the- And so the purview of the planning commission is to determine if the proposed modifications comply with the standards of review. And you do have, because this is a planned development and someone's asking you to modify a standard, you do have the ability to consider whether or not to approve those modifications because of all of the potential impacts to specifically those mobility-related standards.
Is there a, the condition that already, not that doesn't exist, but the recommended condition of approval by the fire department, is that, is there a quality that we, that we could, I'm asking for help now on conditions, if there's a quality that we could add to that to address mobility?
Well, I think the challenge is the planning commission doesn't have any purview over the fire code. And so that's where, where I think it becomes hard. And the reality is, if the planning commission approves a project and the fire department goes out, they, so let me step back a little bit. The fire department creates an emergency response plan for every single property in the city, so they know where to park based on what may happen. So those, the fire department that this district is in will go out, every time a new project is built, they figure out how they're going to respond. And if they go out and they determine they can't respond, the fire department can modify things in the right-of-way. They can't do anything about what's on the private property, but they can go out and change things. And so one of the challenges with this location is the catenaries for the light rail, and that makes it very hard for them to utilize the full existing right-of-way. They don't want to park their trucks underneath those catenaries because then they can't get their ladders up. So that's where this problem arises. It doesn't arise on most streets because most streets don't have light rail catenaries down the middle.
And that, that problem exists because this building is proposed to be over 30 feet?
Correct.
If this was a shorter building?
Yes, so, yeah, aerial fire access is not required for buildings over 30 feet, or under 30 feet, sorry.
But, but the planned development request here doesn't include an exception for height. A building taller, this height of building is allowed? Okay.
It is, yes.
There's a kind of a catch-22 on a lot of sides, I feel like.
I also want to add, if, if this property were being developed and did not request a planned development or design review that had to come before this board, I believe fire has the ability to request that that parking be removed either way through the building permit process administratively.
When there's this much hesitancy on a motion...
I'm ready to make a motion.
We're going to hear a motion.
Okay. Before I make a motion, I care very deeply about this specific neighborhood. I've done quite a bit of work in this neighborhood, and I want this neighborhood to succeed. And so I'm going to vote in favor for this proposal, but I hear you, and I'm not trying to take your concerns lightly, and I will continue to try to advocate for this community. But I'm going to make a motion. So this is a motion for PLN PCM 2023-0092, excuse me. That is dash 00992, Plan Development Request at 855-SOUTH-200WEST. The motion is to approve the, with conditions based on the information presented, and the discussion, I move that the commission approve the plan development application as recommended by staff with the following conditions. The applicant continue to work with fire to resolve the required clear access path around the proposed structure. A lighting plan be submitted during the building permit phase.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Krasik and a second by Commissioner Mike Christensen. Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Berry.
So I appreciate the unique challenges this lot is giving you. I'm not supportive of the adaptation of the open space, although I think ivy's fine. I have 25-year-plus-old ivy that doesn't get water, and I'd like it to die, but it won't, so you can come and take mine. But I don't think that it really meets the standard of C1 open space area completely, so I, for that reason, will vote no.
I'll also vote no. This, that motion passes with four yes votes and two no votes.
I'd like to make a motion for PLN PCM 2024-01104. Based on the information presented in the discussion, I move that the commission approve this design review application as recommended by staff.
Second? Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Mike Christensen and a second by Commissioner Krasik. Any discussion? Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
So I, you know, based on the design review standards, I think that this does comply with those, so I vote yes.
I'm going to vote no. So that passes with five yes votes and one no vote, and that is decision of the planning commission. We're going to pause now for a short break, eight-minute break, so come back at 7:30 to hear. We have three more items on our agenda. Get ready for the conditional use for the parasocial bar will be the first, the next item on our agenda. All right, the next item on our agenda is a conditional use for parasocial bar at approximately 910 West, 1000 North. The possible outcomes for this application are that we can approve the conditional use, we can deny it, we can continue this item, or we can approve it with conditions. The planner is Alicia Sealy, so go ahead and talk about your application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. This next item is what we're calling parasocial bar, and it is an application for a conditional use permit to operate a bar establishment at 910 West, 1000 North, which is in the Rose Park neighborhood. So here is the site, and it's located just on the corner of 1000 North and 900 West. It's currently Zoned CB, community business, and the neighborhood plan is Rose Park. The abutting property to the northeast, really abutting the parking lot, is Zoned RMF 35. It is a residential district, which triggers planning commission approval for this conditional The building is currently being used as an event center, currently operating as an event space. Guillermo Calvo is the property owner. The proposed hours of operation for the bar would be closed on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Thursday through Sunday, 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. And the bar, the operating bar area is about 2,200 square feet of gross floor area and would be completely operated inside the building, so none, no outdoor patio is being proposed, no modifications to the outside of the building are proposed as part of this conditional use permit petition, and staff is recommending approval with conditions. So the standards of review that planning staff have taken into consideration include the zoning district standards, that of the community business district, conditional use standards, and alcohol-related establishment standards, and staff analysis finds that the proposed use generally meets standards outlined for each of these standards of review. Related plans include Plan Salt Lake and Rose Park Small Area Plan, and planning staff finds that this proposed use is in compliance with these plans. Up on this screen here are several plan goals and policy statements that support this use. Up on this screen here are several plan goals and policy statements that support this use, including Plan Salt Lake calls for opportunities for social interaction and supporting West Side business nodes. While the Rose Park Small Area Plan also calls for providing a commercial node that can provide gathering places for friends and neighbors and ensuring that specifically this commercial corridor on 900 West and 1,000 South is designed as a small-scale neighborhood and pedestrian-oriented center and should accommodate pedestrian and bicycle access. And you can see on these photos here, the current building is oriented with a minimal setback close to the street, close to the sidewalk, with a bike lane and a signed crossing across 1,000 North, providing pedestrian to bicycle access to the establishment. Another policy statement from Plan Salt Lake is this goal to pursue equitable access to privately provided services and amenities across the city. And so just to give this visual, this is every bar currently with an operating license in Salt Lake City. And in light blue are all of the areas that are within a 15-minute walk of a bar currently. Parasocial Bar proposed location is the red star up on the upper left of your screen. And the red boundary around that would be the potential accessibility, being able to walk to this bar in 15 minutes. And this is a closer look at that. So currently, Rose Park residents are not able to walk to a bar establishment. Their closest are these that are across I-15. I've received a number of public comments, both in favor and opposed to this bar establishment. Those in favor, these were the most common comments that came up. One, a gathering space, a lot of neighbors hope that this could be an important neighborhood node to facilitate social interaction and gatherings, as well as economic development. Residents stated that this use could help contribute to the local economy and create a more thriving business area along 1,000 North, as well as accessibility. Several neighbors expressed excitement about having an accessible amenity that can encourage walkability. These were the most common concerns that came up in public comments against the proposed use, primarily noise. Many residents voiced concerns over noise impacts on nearby residences, both currently and in the future. These are addressed in the Security and Operations Plan, and the applicant understands the standards that they will need to comply with to mitigate noise impacts on neighbors. Trash and litter, residents complained of litter on the site after events. The Security and Operations Plan also addresses this and outlines a plan for exterior trash management. And then public safety, there were residents that expressed worries that a bar establishment would attract both a transient population and patrons that would engage in unruly behavior and create an unsafe environment. However, the Police Department review did not find any concerns related to public safety or the potential of increased crime. And so given those standards, the planning staff finds that the proposed bar establishment is compatible with applicable master plan policies and initiatives, and the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Planning staff also finds that the proposed use complies with zoning standards for the CB District alcohol-related establishments and conditional uses. Based on the information and findings presented, planning staff recommends approval with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is invited to come to the microphone and make a presentation. You can have 10 minutes to speak.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Guillermo, and this is my sister-in-law Monica Acuna.
So we're running this business together as a family. We're a family thing. We have been owning business for over 12 years in this industry, music. We actually also own a radio station, so we know how all this works. Also, we understand the concerns that the people are having around the trash and everything, the music. Everything has soundproofed, the trash, we're going to be taking care of it. We have a special person that's going to be taking care of the parking lot. And regarding, you know, the alcohol, well, we're going to be limited on how much people can drink. And also, we're going to be offering, just in case if needed, Uber taxis. And we have many people that are willing to work with us regarding the cab service. Also, we are going to be providing more opportunities for more employees to come work with us as well. We're really just trying to make this bar be something where the community can come and distress themselves and just enjoy a drink, not get super drunk. Just, you know, enjoy a drink, have like a date with your wife, just, you know, come off your stress and everything. We understand there is a lot of responsibility. And like I said, we have been in business for more than 12 years. We have managed events up to 2,000 people. I mean, this venue is going to be really small. I think it's only going to fit like around, what, like 100 people? So it's not going to be that many. So I think instead of everything's going to, you know, add to the community to be probably a little bit more happier than just come out of their routine.
And I would also like to add, just based on some of the complaints that I have received from Alicia, I have done my own research, and I have requested a report that I unfortunately didn't bring tonight, but with the police of local noise complaints from that area, when it was a very active event center, and they were very minimal in the stretch of maybe 10 to 12 years. So our goal is not, it will be a bar establishment, but is not to intoxicate or inebriate people. It is more like Monica mentioned, just to come enjoy a nice cold one, a nice wine or a mixed drink after work. And a lot of the positive to it is we will be within the Rose Park community. Just based on the map that I've seen Alicia provide to you guys was, everything is all downtown, everything on the west side of I-15 is very, it's a dead zone for anything fun. I personally live in the Glendale community, so I would personally want one in my community. But unfortunately, there's no spots in there right now. So this opportunity came up, and we feel like we can offer a more modern take on how bars should be ran in this 21st century.
And also, I do want to clarify, we are going to be serving food as well. So we are going to have, we're planning to have like a brunch thing, so we're going to be serving food as well. So you guys can take that in consideration.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions at this?
I do. You stated that you've owned this building for 12 years. What's the existing business that you've been running there?
We don't own it. We're going to lease it.
Oh, so you haven't been running a business there?
No, no.
Okay, okay, that's what I missed.
But we have hosted events, and we did work previously on that venue for the last 15 years. We had hosted events. The capacity, it's about, with the events that we had, I think it was like 700. And we managed alcohol, we have live concerts on there, and everything was good. We actually were very focused with our security, people that we work with, especially because sometimes we had like family event concerts where kids, minors could come in. So we had to be really good on who we hired to work as a security.
So then I guess I'm just curious, then, the existing use is only for special events right now? Or is it an existing business?
It's kind of both. So it is an event center. It doesn't have regular operating hours, it just hosts events.
Okay, thank you.
The businesses that exist there on that corner, though, are in an adjacent building? Or a portion of the same building? Are they on a different lot? Because there are existing businesses there.
Yes, there are existing businesses on the east side that are facing 900 West. It's kind of like a strip mall on the east side of that building, so those will remain.
It seemed like it was one building when I was there? Okay, so there are existing businesses, a restaurant on the property right now?
Yes.
What else?
I think there's a salon and like a tax help.
An office?
Yeah, office.
Thank you. Anything else? No. Okay, we're going to move to the public comment portion. I wonder if anyone is here to speak for the Rose Park Community Council. If you are, you can approach the microphone? No? Okay, so I'm going to start calling names. There are several comments that we have who don't wish to speak, so I'll just read their comments into the record as it comes. The first card I have is from Marilyn Pearson, and then Chris Orton, then Nick Meacom. If you'll approach the microphone, you have two minutes each.
Appreciate it. My name is Marilyn Pearson, and I stand in opposition to this. Been born and raised in Rose Park and have been there for 68 years. And I think the difference between this proposal and the event center is the event center only hosted one to two events per month on an average. So the crowd control is going to be quite a bit different for six days a week, till 1:30 in the morning, 1:45 in the morning. I know that the city staff has recommended to approve this application, but I would ask that the Planning Commission take into consideration a couple of things. First, we were not made aware of this through our community council until November 1st. We did not have a lot of time for the community to voice their opinions. We put together petitions, and we have several people here today. The petitions are both Hispanic people and English-speaking people. The council received this information the first part of September, and like I said, we did not receive information on this until November 1st. Second, as a former chair of the Rose Park Community Mobile Watch for several years, I've seen firsthand what liquor and driving can turn into potential DUIs, not only to mention that we have direct exits and entrances to I-15 freeways, which is known to be a perfect and quick place to do drug deals. We saw some of these DUIs play out in the news recently in the Sugar House Bar, allowing over 200 underage patrons in with false ID. Third, our families don't deserve a dancing bar establishment that's open until 1:45 in the morning, when the owner is portraying this to be a family dining establishment, when in actuality it's a dance hall bar. Finally, I'd like to ask you if you would like to live next door to a bar like this for six days a week until 1:45 in the morning, or how you would feel about that? There are better places to put a bar. I'm not opposed to people who want to drink, but I am opposed to it right in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let me read a card from Jaclyn Abara while Chris Orton is approaching the microphone. Jaclyn Abara is in opposition to this. "Since we live right across the street from Social Bar, we hear all the noise from current establishment, and for the same thing will happen with the bar." Also, it says, "Street elementary children walk on to and from every day. I'm concerned for the children and families there. Furthermore, 10th North is a crash zone." Chris Orton, would you like to speak now?
Great, thank you. I have lived in Rose Park. My husband and I raised our children there since 1985. And when we were searching for a home to purchase, one of the things most important to us was to find a family-friendly environment. As a person whose life has been extremely affected by alcohol use and abuse, I was happy to find that there were no bars in this Rose Park neighborhood. Very family-oriented neighborhood. I know the effects of liquor served in bars on families and children. Yes, alcohol can be purchased in the local grocery stores, I keep hearing that, but a bar environment is something totally different. This is a block and a half from our home. Also located nearby is the Salt City Inn, which has long been a source of trouble in our area. Drunks, drugs, thefts, prostitution, and vagrancy have plagued our neighborhood coming from this one source. And now that the motel is going away, we had but a moment to breathe a sigh of relief. And then we hear that it's proposed to be replaced with another potential source of problems with alcohol. This is not fair to our community. Some of the negatives I see coming along with this proposal are underage drinking, drug deals going on in the parking lot. I know for a fact that this goes on. Intoxicated drivers getting on the streets endangering lives and property. And then the capacity this proposed site, I read, is up to 150 patrons. This is not just a small neighborhood bar. They propose to be open six days and nights a week. There will be no respite for neighbors. The traffic congestion is already problematic on 10th North. I only see further congestion from the bar traffic as a dangerous problem. The studies I have read in my research on bars established in primarily family-oriented neighborhoods is very unfavorable and scary.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick Meacom. Catherine Peters left a card, didn't wish to speak, but is in opposition to this application. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Nick Meacom, and actually, what I'd like to do is I'd like to yield, I don't want to yield my time completely.
You can't, okay, but you can't yield time, so you have two minutes.
I want to have my neighbor stand up first. Is that, is that...
No.
Okay, not acceptable.
Thanks.
Okay, then I will go with what I've got. So I'm going to echo some of the statements. But first, I want to thank Guillermo Calvo and his family for coming to the Rose Park Community Council meeting and taking tough questions. I understand that that's a hard thing to do at the time. I had not received any information on this other than there was a proposed bar there, and so I didn't know where I stood. And I would say, since hearing from my neighbors, some of whom you've already heard from, I stand with them, and I am opposed to this bar coming. There is limited parking already. There's not enough parking for the number of patrons that will come. There's parking to the west that doesn't accommodate the entirety of the establishment. There's a little more parking to the east, and then there's a park-and-ride to the southeast, which already has its problems. The police say that this isn't going to cause any more problems, while the police in the city already don't respond to the problems that are happening over in the southeast park-and-ride there, including homeless posting up in RVs and staying there indefinitely and in perpetuity, even after neighbors report them to the police and to the city through the new SLC mobile app that millions of dollars has been spent on. In fact, the city doesn't even respond to the 48-hour parking infractions that happen there because they need a special team to go out to the RVs. I can't even imagine how this is going to be affected by further traffic and people who are intoxicated coming there. I talked to former police who say that generally a social club or a social bar doesn't elevate any problems, and that's a great thing to hear, except for the fact that you look at the Sugar House Pub, which on Friday was busted. They're right in the middle of a neighborhood. We're opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Ernest Escandon, and then Vita Smith, and then Mr. Garrido.
My name is Ernest Escandon. I lived in the Rose Park area since 1976. My main concern is that of the consumption of alcoholic beverages and driving under the influence. This kind of an establishment with extended hours of operation on weekends would be very inviting to the younger clientele and others with the dancing and consumption of alcohol, which in turn can result in impaired driving. We recently seen the results in the Sugar House area with this type of establishment and the arresting of 80 underage patrons, the youngest being 17 years of age. The majority had fake IDs, so we can see how effective the security can be. This location is next to the I-15 freeway with freeway exits and entrances, adding to the potential wrong-way driving, which we have seen a high increase in the recent months. I have experienced the tragedy and heartbreak from the result of underage drinking and driving. I lost two older brothers, 18 and 19, that were both killed, along with one of their friends due to underage driving. I'm opposed to this establishment.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Vita Smith, and then Mr. Garrido. Next speaker is Vida Smith, and then Mr. Garrido. Vida Smith? Vida Smith? Okay, I'll read it. It says, "I'm against the bar because of the traffic and drugs." So Mr. Garrido is next, and then Richard Sorensen.
Thank you for letting us to talk about this issue. But I'm Mr. Garrido, and I've been living in Rose Park for 35 years. My children grew up over there. I'm living a couple of blocks from this, this open, this business is going to be open. I know, and I'm going to tell you what I'm against of this. We have a, that block over there, it's true, have a beautiful business, wonderful business, which we like to have it, and we want to have this kind. But around the building is a family buildings where a lot of families live there, a lot of children. Couple of blocks from that, that business is going to be open. It's a school with my grandchildren attend at one time. And now is my great, my great, my great, my grandchildren going to be, my grandchildren going to be attending those kinds of schools around. I know they're going to be walking over there. We have a motel over there, which as a former chair of the community, I know the problems in that building, and I know what's going on over there. Imagine when that bar going to be open. There's a lot of temptations there. Second, is this saloon, which is a party saloon or whatever. Imagine when that people going to be there. I know my Hispanic people, I'm Hispanic 100%. And I know they're going to get out, they're going to get some drinks. Right there in the corner is the light to the entrance of the freeway. Right there, right there. Imagine if anybody come and get drunk or whatever, driving around the entrance of the freeway. A lot of things going to happen. And I know that kind of business is okay. I know I'm not against of the business. They can be open, but they can be open in a different place around here where there's no families around with the children. I know we have a neighbor right here who, which just live across the street of that building with their families and their children. And I know bars never bring anything good. They can be happy, a place to have a drinks and things like that.
Thank you, sir.
But it's going to be hard to live around there. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Sorensen, and then Diego Garian.
Hi, I'm Richard Sorensen. I've lived in Rose Park now for 47 years, and I live down the street from the bar, the proposed bar. Victoria Way comes down and goes around my house, and I live on the corner there. I don't know how many times I've had people in the neighbors' yards to the, to the west of me and the east of me with cars in their yards, because people come down that road, flying around that corner, and either roll or run into their houses. It's a possibility. It's also too close to the freeway. There's no way for anybody to determine that these folks are sober and not hop on the freeway and go. There's also the possibility of going the wrong way there right at north. I'd realize that freeway, when they make the changes, is going to affect this corner of Rose Park. But I'm speaking for my grandkids and my, my kids also. I never in my wildest dreams imagined that Self's Grocery Store would turn into a bar, so to speak. So I have nothing against these folks. It's just not the right place to put it, and I wish them success with their endeavors, but this just isn't the right place to put it. There are other options and other places to do. And at the end of the day, these folks go home at 2 o'clock in the morning to somewhere else. It's not right next door to this place. From what I understand, they live in West Valley, and I also understand that they've run events before and things like that, but from, to my understanding, they have no experience whatsoever of running a full-size bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Diego, and then Myri Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Diego Garrido. I am a member of the Rose Park community. I live in Rose Park. I've lived there for 14 years. My wife and I, we bought a house there in 2010. I grew up in Rose Park. I've been there since we moved from California in early 1990s. And I am opposed to the bar being implemented in this site. Reason why is I think what it brings, it doesn't bring anything good. My biggest concern would be what it causes when someone does decide to, you can say all day that, you know, you'll use Uber, you'll use taxis, but the one person that does decide to drive home 1,000 North, whether they go that way or to the freeway, they'll decide to use their car, and then that's always asking for trouble, I think. And it doesn't bring anything good. And so the other concern I do have, I don't think it has to do with the trash or with the noise complaints. We have planned, Rose Park, I don't know, I don't know if this is a fact, but I could confidently say that it's 50%, if not more, Latino-based. And so I did catch wind that there was some comments about the, the people that signed the petition, they were racist. I don't think that's the, that's the case for anybody. Rose Park is filled with Latino businesses and Latino-owned businesses. We have El Cabrito, Rancho Market, Chubbies, El La Manzanita, all those communities, all those businesses that are Hispanic-owned or Latino-owned, and, and we support those, Rose Park does support that. And so again, we are against the bar. We don't need the problems that it does bring. And I think some of that map shows the density of where those bars are. They're located east of the freeway in downtown, and I think the community does have an understanding that if you want a cold one, you're going to go to downtown, and I think that's where that should be placed. As a council, I think you should definitely ask yourselves, would you want a bar placed in your own neighborhood or this close to a neighborhood? And with, again, we saw that at the Sugar Pub Bar, whatever it is, they had issues with it too, and they were closed down. And so again, I am opposed for it, and I appreciate your time.
That's time. Thank you. Myri Anderson, and then Alfredo Ibarra Gomez.
I come to you not with statistics or figures, but because I am a resident of a wonderful neighborhood. It's not a community, it's a neighborhood. Neighborhoods are made up with people who care about each other, who work for each other. They support other things that going on in our, in our neighborhood, schools and other businesses. We have people there that are pushing 100. They're original owners of those homes. We have brand-new, just married couples living there. It's a, it's a wonderful place to be. And we have many religions. We all get together. It doesn't bother us. We can be living two different religions on one side of us. It doesn't matter. We're friends. We care. And this is my feeling about the whole thing, is that we do not want an element, an element in there that's going to change things. We've already had a lot of problems that we've been able to get through. They may be able to control those people that are drinking in their establishment. They have no control over them once they get out. I live just up the street from it. I've seen a lot of things coming on. I have a frontage road right up behind me, a lot of stuff going on there. We need to have control as much as we can. And we fear, those of us who care, we fear that once that have, if that, if this goes in, other, other businesses that we don't care to have there will be approved to get in there. And we're just asking for that to be looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you state your name, Ms. Anderson? You're Mrs. Anderson.
Name is Merle.
Merle Anderson.
Merle Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you. Alfredo Ibarra Gomez. Okay, I'll read his statement. He says, "This business is not necessary or needed. It will bring nothing but trouble to our beautiful neighborhood." I have another statement from Rosemary Bennett, who states, "I do not want this bar in Rose Park. I have lived in Rose Park 69 years, and I love it, and I want, I don't see the need to have a bar in our beautiful neighborhood." Sue Scott says, "I am against having a bar in my neighborhood because it's a family community. Traffic will increase, noise will continue when people are trying to sleep. Although the proprietor says they will control crowds, actions, et cetera, I'm not sure that that's possible when people are intoxicated." Do we have anybody else who would like to speak on this application? You can approach the microphone and state your name, and we'll give you two minutes.
I am Raquel Gomez, and I, we have a hotel, which is halfway a house right next to the bar. The bar will be filled there additions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Or do we have any new emails? Oh, go ahead. You can approach the microphone.
Hello, my name is Maria, and I'm for it. Like everybody says, that it's a well-lit community with family. That's what we're going to also bring. And for the people that are leaving the bar, there's going to be, they're going to be having the alcohol service permit, and they're going to be having a log of people, like when they're driving out, you know, driving the license plates number down for in case they're intoxicated, they're going to also request taxis for them. There's going to be food. Even if you go downtown, you could always get in a car accident. You can leave your grandma's, get in a car accident. So it doesn't matter if you're at a bar or wherever, you're always going to cause an accident if that's what they're for, you know? But as a community, we're trying to keep that, something local in our neighborhood. There's other businesses there that are growing functionally, and yeah, Rose Park is growing. We need something local in our neighborhood instead of like, kind of driving somewhere a little bit farther when you just want to like, either walk or just drive, like 10-minute drive, you know? So I'm for it, and everything is going to be legally. The motel has nothing to do with this bar that's opening. That's a whole different business, and I think that's what needs to get taken down. But other than that, that's all I have to say, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment. I want to note that the staff report, which we all received, had 22 pages of public comment, including the petitions in English and in Spanish. So those are all things that we've seen. To summarize real quick, there was concern about cars crashing in the neighborhood, the large size of the business, congestion, that notification of this application just happened on November 1st, crime, trash. Did I already say noise? Those are the things that I heard as public concerns about this application. I'm going to give the applicant a few minutes to respond if you want to about the public comment.
Sorry, I, I actually want to, you know, thank everybody that gave your, your opinion. I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, I'm an aunt, I'm a sister, I'm a mother. You know, I understand your concerns, but also, not because other people don't know how to run their businesses, it means that we're not going to be able to. It means that we're not going to be have control of what we have. Like I said, we have the experience that we have, you know, also, like, like the person that just talk. I think that if any, anybody, we're going to be adults. We're going to be adults, we're going to have our security guard, I didn't want to say it, but they're going to be official cops. They work for, they're active police members, that they're going to be working as a security person in our area. Also, with the cap and everything, I mean, we're going to be, we're not going to be letting people, we're going to do our best. We're adults, we can manage every single person that goes in, but we're going to do our best so people are not driving intoxicated. Also, I forgot what I was going to say. If you want to talk of something else, I actually forgot.
Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, sorry. My name is Monica Kuna.
Thank you.
And I'm going to be actually one of the managers managing the spot. Like I said, we have a ready station and we have many other businesses, four more businesses that we're running. So we are actually, we take care of our businesses. We're not going to let someone else come in and just run everything for us.
I would like to add, so a couple of months ago, I went over to Washington State. These kind of establishments are common over there. I'm not trying to compare Utah with Washington, but I talked to one of the owners with a local neighborhood bar, and I've like, she mentioned, we've all received a DABC training on handling alcohol sales. We reserve the right to stop a patriot at any given time and point that they are at our establishment, and we also reserve the right to keep their keys and, in a way, force them into a complimentary ride home. So as far as the addressing the freeway entrances, I'm not too concerned about that because just based on that training that we had by the DABC, I can confirm that we reserve the right to stop anybody from being in automobile.
Thank you.
And also, there's a restaurant right now running the business in there. They sell alcohol, they have, you know, they have food in it, they have everything. So far, I don't know if there's a way we can look up, but there hasn't been that many accidents in there as well. So there is serving alcohol already. There's a restaurant, a Mexican restaurant, where they have food and they have alcohol and everything, and it hasn't been an issue. So it's not like we're bringing alcohol new to this place, because there has been alcohol already on there, which they're keeping track, they're doing a really good job serving the alcohol, and there haven't been any issues with the freeway entrance or people crashing into people's houses or running someone over.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, we're going to go into executive session now, which means that the commissioners can ask questions if we need to, and we can discuss and make motions. In particularly, I want us to consider, do we see any negative impacts that can be addressed with a recommendation or a condition?
So I want to start the discussion and partly address all of the community that came out today. I am fairly sure this is your first time participating in such of a process, and so there's probably a lot that you're unfamiliar with. I, I want to state for you that the planning commission doesn't have the luxury to just make a decision based on how we feel. We have specific standards for conditional use that we are required by state law to follow. And state law also specifies that our role is, if it meets the standards, our role is to look for ways we can mitigate detrimental impacts reasonably. And so we don't have a lot of leeway. We don't get the luxury to just say, okay, we don't like it, we won't do it. We have to evaluate every application like staff did to those standards. That being said, I also wish the community to know that a conditional use can be revoked. So if a conditional use is granted, and the community starts to demonstrate that they are not complying with whatever mitigation has been placed, in this case, the Safety and Operations Plan, and it's not working, and you've been documenting it, that conditional use can be revoked. So I, I'm pretty sure none of you were aware of that, but I want you to know that. So in terms of this particular application, the detrimental impacts that kind of have been, I mean, that have been raised that are typical, and that is, and I actually do live in Sugar House and Sugar House Pub, I think the controls of the DABC have worked because they got caught doing, letting underage people in, but they've been in operation since the early 2000s. And there's other pubs and, and a couple of bars right in my neighborhood, and a dance club. So there's, there's a lot of activity there, so I'm very, I'm understanding of what these impacts are and what neighbors are concerned about. Noise is one of them. Noise is regulated by Salt Lake County Health. They have rules that affect all of Salt Lake County, and so if they are violating the noise ordinance, that the police can kick that in, and that can be a debarit, so to speak, towards the conditional use, conditional use permit. Additionally, trash and litter is addressed with the Safety and Operations Plan. If it is not being followed up on, and you meet with the owners, and it continues to be a problem, that can be a reason why the conditional use permit gets revoked. So the owners have a very strong dedication to make sure that that doesn't become a problem. So I, and in regards to the petition, you know, the petition specifically stated that we would issue the alcohol permit, but we have no role in that whatsoever. but we have no role in that whatsoever. That is completely out of the city's authority as well. So when it comes for me to this conditional use application, I find that staff's analysis is sound and that all of the standards are met and based on the direction of state law. I think we have reasonably mitigated the detrimental impacts that can be mitigated. And I don't find any reason why we, how we can deny the conditional use request.
I wanna make a comment to thank you for making your public comment on petitions, writing letters, sending emails, because we do see all of those. Coming to a meeting is not the easiest thing downtown on a cold evening. So I appreciate you doing that. A couple of things I wanna address real quick on public comments. Notification of the community council on November 1st is in line with rules, right? I think there's a 45-day notification?
Can I make, can I make a comment?
Yes, please do.
I am a little bit alarmed that that comment was made because all of the application documents were sent to Kevin Park, who's listed as the chair of the Rose Park Community Council on October 8th. And the notice was posted at the property on October 8th as well to start that 45-day public input period.
Okay, so the public, and also, we're still taking public input today. So the public input period has been as long as the law requires. I also understand that the size of this bar is limited by rules too. It can be 2,900 square feet or something like that, about that. So it can't, it's not going to be, it can only be this big. And that's a rule.
Can I challenge that for just a second? I'm sure the size issue. Because the building itself, the space for the bar is something like over 6,000 square feet. And they're building it, what is clearly marked on the plan is a temporary wall.
Right.
So I'm concerned about the, what happens when, when the zoning is changed, if it is changed, but probably it'll be changed to allow this bar. And it would allow the bar to be any size.
Is it unlimited in proposed legislation?
I don't believe the zoning consolidation is removing that maximum size in this, what would be the MU3 zone. I think it's maintaining that, but we can verify that for sure.
There was a comment to that in the, does a temporary wall?
There was a comment about that in the staff report, that it would be, that there's no limit on a bar size in the new zone. Let's just, let's figure that one out. Because I think that's actually would, I think that would actually be, I think a bar is very compatible with the neighborhood and a great place for entertainment. And I do have bars across the street from me. So the, I think that, but it's an entirely different thing when it's a very large dance hall, you know, attracting hundreds of people.
While, it looks like Nick is looking that up. So can, do, did you wanna finish something while Nick is looking?
I'm sorry, I jumped you, but I wanted to.
Well, the question's been asked a couple of times. Would you like this next to you? And it, looking at the map, I've never seen that map of where bars are located and where a 15-minute walk from that is. I live in a bar desert and I, I didn't technically know that, but I felt it. There's not a, I don't have a bar within walking distance. So if I go to a bar, I have to take an Uber. I have to get my, a friend to drive me and drop me off and pick me up. And that, that's a real thing. Walking to a bar is a different thing. And as a community business, it's not for everybody. I understand everybody doesn't want to go to one. And stories of personal loss associated with drunk driving or intoxication are, you can't argue with them. But the fact is that our city laws allow bars with, with rules that regulate how loud they can be, how big they can be, how late they can stay open, those kinds of things. So it's a, it's a legal use of the property. And I'm also, I'm also moved by the analysis in the staff report about how the problems are mitigated by the rules, so.
Commissioner Shear, which standard are you relating you're concerned to?
My, my, with, hold on. Good question.
Do you, do you mind if I make a comment really quick while you're looking? So I have two comments. So the first is that a conditional use functions under the same legal framework as a church. So it means that a church or a bar is allowed use as long as we can mitigate that, the negative impacts of that use. So that's kind of what we're looking at of, it's not that it's, we're approving whether it exists or not. It's this is allowed under the legal framework. Can we mitigate problems? A potential problem that I would like to know, to know more information about is just kind of talking about the elementary school that is nearby and where is the safe schools path for kids getting home? If, I don't, I, because of the location of this, I wouldn't imagine that the safe schools path for getting home leads people past this lot. But if it was to, then that would be something that would be concerning for me. So, and then I think we would need to make some mitigating recommendations if the, if the safe schools act for, like the safe schools path leads past this property. Do you happen to know any information about like the designated safe schools path?
I don't. The closest elementary school is Rose Park Elementary, which is along 1,000 north, a few blocks to the west of this property. So it is possible that kids are walking along 1,000 north past that property, but past that property is the freeway, so.
Yeah, okay.
So to answer your question, Commissioner Barry, I'm actually looking at detrimental effects determination under the conditional use standards. Where are, number three, B3, the use is well suited to the character of the site and adjacent uses as shown by an analysis of the intensity, size, and scale of the use compared to existing uses in the surrounding area. So I think actually it is an issue of intensity and size. And that may be something that we can mitigate.
How, how are you concluding that? Cause, cause the way I read this, this one is the intensity and size of the surrounding area. So I'm thinking the strip mall to the north. But how are you interpreting it?
There's also the housing to the south, too.
Yeah. So how is, how is this intensity different if the building itself isn't being modified? Are you just looking at it?
I'm looking at the intensity of the use. In other words, a population that's quite a bit.
Yeah, okay.
Bigger and then the idea of a walkable neighborhood bar would suggest.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you, will you be leasing 7,000 square feet? Is that the space that you're leasing? Or does, does that include the restaurant, the office?
We're only gonna be leasing the, what the current event center is under limitations of the wall that we were required. But that does not include the rest.
Staff, can you clarify this wall thing? Sorry.
Sorry, the, the size limitation?
Yes.
Yeah, so in our land use tables for the community business district, under conditional uses for a bar and alcohol establishment, it's listed that one of the conditions is that that bar and alcohol establishment cannot exceed, I believe it's 2,500 square feet or 2,300 square feet. And so I worked with the applicant to try to cut down that site plan and so that their operating space for the bar is in compliance with that square footage requirement.
I, I think that's the issue that we consider. That the rule is you can have 1750 of floor space and 450 outdoor. And those two added together is this number. And that is what their site plan is outlined to be. It's, it's 2,000 square feet. I think, I think that that's what we consider.
So if it's a conditional use, we can make that a condition of the conditional use, right? I mean, that can be, we can restrict that size.
Yeah, so under the current rules, it has, it cannot exceed that. Otherwise, the use is not authorized.
Correct.
So, so if, if someone was, came in and proposed 3,000 square feet, we would tell them no right off the bat. Because you're violating the code. So you can place that as a condition. So I did look up the consolidation and it is changing. We're, we're eliminating that cap, we're keeping it as a conditional use. And we're subjecting it to the alcohol rules. So the idea behind that is that the planning commission can consider the overall scale of the use for, in the future. So you can put a cap on that. And you, you can word it in a way that says even if the rules change in order to increase their, you know, if that does go away six months from now.
In order to increase it, they'd have to come back and redo their conditional use.
Correct.
Well, that sounds like a good idea.
I just, like, to me, like, whether the internal framework extends, I don't understand how that drastically affects the community if the noise, if they're, the noise complaints and the other kind of things that they've outlined are in compliance. So that is a, you, one could make that recommendation. And I think we maybe need to start thinking about what recommendation we're gonna make. But that's where I stand on that.
In that case, though, should we consider? I don't know why it makes sense to make that condition that if the rule changes, it doesn't change for this property when every other bar in the city, it would change for them when we didn't consider that possibility when granting or considering conditional use permit in other places.
So I, I think there's a couple of factors is, one, we haven't had a conditional use for a bar for several, I think the last one was probably about a year ago, actually. And at that point in time, there was no proposal to change that. And so I don't know that it's, it's fair to say no one else has been able to do this. All bars are not conditional uses. If they increase by either more than 25% of their existing floor area or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less, has to get a new conditional use.
Okay.
That's in our code right now.
Okay. So if we approve, if we approve this conditional use, they're limited to the current rules, 2,000, whatever it is, 2,200. If they increase, if they take out their temporal wall, temporary wall to increase the size, they will have to apply for a new conditional use if the rule changes.
If it's more, yeah, if it's more than 25% or 1,000 square feet, whichever.
Okay. I feel like we're covered then in this case without adding additional condition. That's my feeling, but.
I think it's a reasonable mitigation to add that condition.
I think it's especially reasonable.
That's still very large.
Since the applicant calls this a temporary wall in their plans. And since, and since we know and anticipate that there's something that would loosen that, we wanna make it very clear to the neighborhood and to, and because the building is basically in that size already. They don't have to come for an addition, they don't have to come for a building permit, blah, blah, blah. So I think, I think it's a reasonable limitation to put in the actual conditional use approval.
Are you ready to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Oh, you will?
Yes.
Hey.
And just wanna thank everyone for the good discussion and especially Commissioner Barry's explanation of how conditional use permits work in the state of Utah. For PLN PCM 2024-00949, based on the information presented and discussion, I move that the commission approve this conditional use permit application as recommended by staff with the following conditions. The applicant shall record a copy of the approved security and operations plan with the Salt Lake City Recorder's Office as required for alcohol-related uses.
Second.
I'm, I'm sorry, can, can you state your motion again? I'm sorry. I'm allowed to ask, I'm serious.
It's fine. Based on the information presented and discussion, I move that the commission approve this conditional use permit app as recommended by staff with the following conditions. The applicant shall record a copy of the approved security and operations plan with the Salt Lake City Recorder's Office as required for alcohol-related uses.
Thank you. And a second by Commissioner Scott, thank you.
I would like to make a friendly amendment. I would like to add condition two, that the bar establishment be, use be limited to what is shown in the plan, ending at the temporary wall.
Do you accept that amendment?
I, in this case, am going to say no since it's just been explained to us that if they did do a substantial increase in square footage, it would trigger another conditional use permit, so.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, we'll vote on the original motion unless there's anything else? Okay, Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
No.
Commissioner Krasik?
No.
Commissioner Shear?
No.
Commissioner Burrows, I vote yes. It's a tie, so it doesn't pass. Okay, so that motion did not pass. Do we wanna try another motion? Our options are to do another motion or we can continue this request.
Can I ask, is it the issue just that, that size thing?
Yes.
So I mean, based on the current code, if they do anything more than an extra 500 feet, they have to come back for a conditional permit.
But we know the code is gonna be changing next year.
On the new code.
Yeah, right now, they, because they're maxing out what the current code allows. Under the current code, they cannot expand it. If the code changes as proposed and the city council adopts that, then they could come back so they can expand up to that calculation, 25% or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. I write. They exceed that.
I would say that.
Exceed that.
Okay, stop, let's listen to, we're listening to you. Thank you.
If they exceed that, they have to get a new conditional use.
I would argue that, that what is allowed of 1,000 square feet or 25%, given what the size of this is currently, that that would be an impact that is something that we should reasonably consider to mitigate. So if it, I think that expansion that's allowed in the new code, that does not trigger a conditional use is large enough that we should be considering this right now.
Director Norris? If we make that a condition of this conditional use permit, that it's limited to the currently legal square footage, but they want to apply for a new conditional use, that, that they would get rid of that requirement anyway. A new conditional use permit wouldn't necessarily require that condition.
In the future, any property owner who has a conditional use has the option to apply for a new conditional use for whatever reason they feel necessary.
And whatever conditions we feel necessary at that time.
That's right.
This is an perpetuity recorded against the title, you can never change it. So maybe, so maybe it's a distinction without a difference to me, so. Somebody who wants to make a motion?
Commissioner Shear does.
Oh, let me, let me get it, let me get it, let me get it. Let me get it. Right here. here.
Based on the, based on the information presented and discussion, I move that the commission approve the conditional use permit application as amended by staff with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall record a copy of the approved security and operations plan with the Salt Lake City Recorder's Office as required by alcohol-related, for alcohol-related uses. And number two, the area of the bar establishment cannot exceed what is shown on the plan up to the temporary wall.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Shear and a second by Commissioner Berry. Any discussion, amendments, replacement motions? No. Okay, we're gonna vote. Um, Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows. I will vote yes because I think that it's a distinction without a difference. And Commissioner Scott?
No.
Okay, that conditional use permit request passes five to one, so that is approved. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, our next item is a rezone request at approximately two seventy-three east, eight hundred south. This is the last item on our agenda today.
We're having to alley vacation.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You got ahead of yourself.
I skipped an item. Item number eight. This is an alley vacation request at approximately two sixty-nine west Brooklyn Avenue. The planner is John Anderson. Um, the outcomes for this, this is a legislative item instead of a administrative item, so the outcomes in this is we will recommend to the city council either approval or denial, or we can recommend approval with conditions. Mr. John Anderson.
All right, sorry, I haven't been in the seat in a little while in here, so, um, let's present. Oh, no. Aubrey, what button do I push? Sorry. What button do I push to make it full screen? Sorry. Control, that's, apologize. I know we've been here a long time. Everyone else, I know, I'm looking for.
Slide show.
Oh, thank you. And then, from beginning. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, clearly I'm not Eric. Eric is not available for the meeting today and I'm his manager, so I'm gonna take care of this for him. Um, just real quick background, this may look familiar to some of you who've been on the commission for a while because in July twenty nineteen, the planning commission recommended approval of vacating the same alley. It was transmitted to the city council, but later the applicant at the time decided to cancel the application. Um, I couldn't find any explanation provided. Um, it also looked familiar because, um, there's been two different, um, developments, the Bumper House and Cromerx, which both received design review and plan development. Um, both of them have been granted extensions that would get them into twenty twenty-five at this point. So, again, we're looking at, uh, vacating an entire alley from Washington Street to what's the former rail line. The alley is approximately fifteen by two hundred fifty-three feet. It's intended to accommodate a future affordable housing project. Um, the applicants are here and all of them go into that. As of right now, we are recommending, uh, that the commission forward a positive recommendation to the council to vacate the alley. Um, so here's just kind of a bird's eye view here, looking to the west, you can see the yellow is the alley vacated, there's Washington Street in the front, Third West and Brooklyn Avenue on the right. Um, so again, we're just looking at this from above. All the blue properties are owned by the applicant. Um, the red is the alley to be vacated. There is one parcel on the corner of Brooklyn and Washington that's not highlighted that, um, they are not participate, they did not sign on to participate in the alley vacation. Um, they don't necessarily have, use it as access, but, um, but they do have that connection to it, they are adjacent to it. Um, as of right now, it's an interesting street because Washington Street dead ends just south of this picture. And so it really kind of operates currently, has access to just the existing business operations and not really, there's no through traffic, there's nothing, um, past that. So, um, at the moment, I also want to highlight on the left side, you can see where there's an abandoned rail line. Um, it is currently owned by UTA and is planned for a future light rail line with a potential station near Third West. Um, UTA, we contacted them, they came back with some very, uh, with some information, but as of right now, because they haven't gone through all the environmental studies, this is just a locally preferred option. And so when we asked them, um, you know, what could this look like? They couldn't really define that. Um, they did say that it was likely the Brooklyn Avenue would be the major entrance onto that. Um, when we kind of asked whether or not they would be able to access to the site from the applicant's property to the east, they weren't able to say that. Um, just said, they're kind of looking at spacing and room and, you know, they don't, unlike the S-line where you have sidewalks and people interacting because it's such a slow rate of speed, that in general with the light rail lines are less inclined to do that, but they couldn't give anything definitive, so. Um, here's some photographs of the proposed alley. Um, as you can see, the one on the left is just looking straight down that alley. It is fenced right now, I think partially because they're trying to avoid graffiti, which clearly hasn't been working. Um, the other phone on the right, there's actually a pretty steep grade in there because they've had to dig out a lot of the dirt there and my assumption is for environmental remediation. Um, and so in that sense there, it really doesn't really exist at all any longer. Um, so just as a reminder, alley vacation, they have to fulfill one of the following considerations, lack of use, public safety, urban design or community purpose. Um, the applicant is claiming lack of use, public safety and urban design. Um, so lack of use, I mean, this, you can see from the picture on the right, the alley's been closed to public for at least twenty years. Um, it was used for storage of vehicle parts, hence the name Bumper House, because those were a lot of bumpers in there. Um, I don't know how long it's been fenced, but you can see it has been a long time. It also leads from a dead end, Washington Street, to what has been an abandoned rail line. Um, and again, this is looking to accommodate an affordable housing development. Um, public safety, we talked to the police, there isn't any major public safety issues, anything other than any other alleyway I think has in this city. Um, so there is graffiti on buildings, I'm sure there has been some issues with unsheltered people, but, um, that's really not any different than most of our alleys. One can, one thing to consider though is because it's partially excavated, it's not a street grade, that as you're going down, it's, could potentially be some sort of a public safety issue. Um, and then urban design, uh, you know, the alley doesn't connect any rightaways. It exists, um, but, um, it doesn't make any real significant connections. Um, it could make it a little bit more difficult to develop these parcels. They're kind of two triangles, they're kind of odd shaped because they're forced between a rail and a dead end street. Um, there are two landlocked parcels. Part of this recommendation is that they would be consolidated. Um, and then further, the, the staff considered using Brooklyn Avenue was probably a better option for future sidewalks, bike lanes through the area, connecting that to the future right, light rail line. You can see this picture, Brooklyn Avenue is not really, um, fully developed, obviously, so. Um, just next steps, we're looking for a recommendation from the planning commission, whether approval, um, approval of conditions or denial, is, we'll get forwarded to the, the city council, um, where they'll be able to make a final decision. So, um, if it is approved, the land would be conveyed to abutting property owners. Um, in this case, because they're not residential, it would not be given away, it would be sold at market rate. Um, so staff is recommending, um, favorable recommendation to the council with the condition that the landlocked parcels are combined with adjacent parcels. And the applicants are here and they do have a presentation.
Great. The applicants can come and you have ten minutes to make a presentation? State your name, please. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's George Howser, uh, and this is Jake Williams.
Yeah, so I'm Jake Williams. We both, uh, represent the development team and George is also, uh, the architect on the project and has been involved in it for
Five years.
About five years. So he's been doing the environmental cleanup of the site, um, and made a ton of progress and we're excited about what that good-looking alleyway could look like in the future. So I don't want to take ten minutes, uh, just thank staff, John, for filling in for Eric and, um, kind of run through, basically, like John said, the, the hard part of these parcels is they're both triangles. And so to get, um, parking to work, oh, how do I, how do I move forward here, John? Let's see. Just always got to be that guy. Let's see. Yeah, so you kind of get an idea of, um, the two parcels, they have these weird angles and as split by the alleyway, we've made it work on both sides as currently proposed with the parking, but the parking's really expensive and really inefficient to be able to get, one of the pieces of feedback we got from the city, from the community is that they'd like a higher parking count and ratio. And so we wanted to hit that little bit higher number for the sake of the neighborhood. Um, and so the goal was, the alleyway really unlocks both properties to get more efficient parking and a higher density of parking on the small footprints. And so in essence, what we proposed, or what we're proposing to do by taking over the alley, is to actually incorporate it into a ramp that would be shared between both sides and actually also prepare a way so that the property owner on the corner could also participate and have a shared use, to be able to use the ramp to access a future development for their site and have a second story of parking on, on their site as well, because all three are small, hard to fit parking on, and that's kind of the gist of the idea, or kind of the idea, um, to add the efficiency. I'm trying to figure out if it's down.
It's right there.
Does that have a special touch here? Oh, okay. So this kind of shows the, you'd enter on grade and then the ramp, we actually planned the ramp to start before our Brooklyn parcel, so that it gets up to height in order for, um, our neighbor on the corner to be able to use it in the future, access their own parking garage if they decided to develop, uh, in the future, while also still maintaining, if he wanted to have access, which he doesn't currently use, he could still have access to the east side, um, of the alleyway as well. Let's see. So this kind of shows from, this would be looking from the west, shows the split of the alleyway, and then there would be just this one-story portion in the middle that is a ramp to get up to a second story of parking and then it would split to go into, into either building. Um, ultimately, like I said, it makes it a whole lot more efficient to be able to provide affordable housing. We've, we've currently applied for the Brooklyn parcel, so this bumper house portion, we've applied for tax credits to do affordable housing, um, on the site, which is a mixed income project that we're really excited about. And this really unlocks, ultimately, currently the way we have it modeled, it unlocks some cost savings that go toward currently in tax credit housing. There's a gap of financing, so we have to go get federal state credit and state credits. And the hope is that we can reduce the amount of state credits that we need to make the project work by being able to unlock some efficiencies in the parking structure by capturing that value from the alleyway. So ultimately, that's kind of the goal. We're really excited about the project. I gotta give, um, George a ton of credit for the work he's already done to clean up the site and bring it to a place where it can be a productive member of the neighborhood and the future growth of what's going on here.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any clarifying questions?
Right.
So that's currently with the alleyway?
Currently, yeah. So that, it, it still stays programmed as basically two buildings and it still sort of functions as an alleyway, but it just has a ramp on it and then it would be a little more of a controlled nature to access the, the ramp.
The way you've planned this now, there's no
Is your, is your mic on?
Sorry, I apologize to everyone. Um, so you, the way you've planned this now, there's not a pedestrian way through this double large project here.
No, so the pedestrian would actually push to the west side, so we have a rear yard setback that we would be landscaping and, and hopefully at some point, if UTA does do the stop there, there would be some connection with their landscaped areas as well to create a walkway on the west side. So traffic from across the street, currently everything across the street is a whole big block of one big industrial building, but if it were to develop, the traffic would then push to an improved Brooklyn Avenue. And then also potentially, we could, we could open up access along that west side to create a walk along
Okay, thank you.
Kind of a landscaped walkway or along the west.
We're, we're also proposing a, a pedestrian connection at the terminus of, um, South Washington that would be associated with the, the Cromerx project. So somebody walking down across, uh, South Washington wouldn't be locked at that point. They could actually cross our, transit our property and get over to the rightaway. Our hope is that, along with the, the tracks extension, that they're going to, uh, incorporate a pedestrian walkway or bike path or some, even maybe some, maybe, uh, recreational elements in the development of the rightaway. And so, you know, we're eager to facilitate that by providing access along our west property line and also making that connection, uh, at the south end so that people can transit to that bike, bike path.
UTA has a pretty large rightaway currently, so combine that with our, what is our rear yard setback currently that would be landscaped. We feel like it could actually make a really nice pedestrian connection. And then we'd, we'd have multiple areas of our building that could walk out onto that, that open space.
Thank you.
So, um, in the staff report, it looked like the owner of ten twenty-six does not want this alley to be vacated, correct?
Yeah, I'm guessing he's here and we've spoken to him on multiple occasions. Uh, we still would do it in a way to provide value to him, um, and, and provide access by us paying, we'd be paying for the ramp that he could use in the future and we'd still, we'd still offer that up to him if he wanted to develop in the future.
Okay. I mean, I, I could, my, my concern is that that starts before it gets past his building, so you're regrading up against his building and taking away the pedestrian access there. Like if
So there's not
If that yellow started further down, then I think that makes sense.
Well, so the, yeah, so the ramp starts, I mean, it can start later. We were offering that as a benefit to him, that it's a ramp that then he could use to access a second level on his property, which if we start it past his property, he wouldn't be able to use the ramp in the future, because currently it's not a pedestrian rightaway. An alley is only fifteen feet wide and so it would only be used for traffic and we would still use it for that. We would improve the alley, whether or not we purchase it, we just wouldn't be putting a ramp on it. So we would still use it for access for both properties and improve it and use it as an alley and access, but it wouldn't be, there's no sidewalk in an alleyway. That, it's not a pedestrian access location. And it, in all honesty, for like forty years, it's been fenced off.
Well, if he's here, I'll let him talk and come back to it.
We, we do also be willing to move the ramp back if he wants access on the south side of his property, uh, you know.
Sir, can you make sure your microphone is on?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, is that better? We'd be willing to move the, the ramp, the location of the ramp is, is really, uh, we're willing to accommodate, you know, whatever vision he has for his property. We can, we can move it, slide it east and west so that he could have access on the, uh, portion of it on the, on the, toward the east or, you know, if he wants more access on the second level on the west side, you know, we're, we're flexible.
And that was why we proposed it this way, is to give him benefit that he doesn't have to pay for. In our case, I mean, our estimate is it's probably worth at least a half a million dollars to him to be able to access a second story of parking without have to do an internal ramp. So that was why. It was just an effort to like, let him participate and make it a win-win across the board and he can voice, he has some other, I don't know that the design of the ramp or the alleyway was his concern as much as the, the nature of the neighborhood changing and having some additional traffic. I think in our last conversation, that was his concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other clarifying questions? I want to clarify that this is an alley right now, which means it's publicly owned. It does have, access is allowed whether or not it's used for pedestrians or cars. It's an alley and, and we all own it. So anybody who can get a car on there can drive on it.
Yeah, I didn't mean
Legally.
Not driving. I just meant it's not like a, a pedestrian walkway, I guess was my.
It's, right. Legally, there is access to it. At any rate, um, we're gonna go to the public comment. Is anyone here from Central Ninth or Ballpark Community Council who wants to speak? No. Okay, um, Jason Boe, you're up. State your name, just like I did, and then you have two minutes to speak.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Jason Boe. Uh, my company is West Brooklyn LLC. Uh, I'm representing five parcels that I own, uh, adjacent to this development. I own I own specifically the parcel that's adjacent to the alley, and then I own four other parcels across the street, and then across the street from Brooklyn Avenue as well. And to be clear, I'm, I'm opposing the vacation of the, the alley. It's my understanding that, you know, the, the planning commission is proposing that that be divided and be sold off to the adjacent property owners. You know, quite frankly, I'm not sure how that benefits either one of us, it's 15 feet. I own one half the length, and, and the developer owns the other half the length. That basically means if one says they can't use it or use their half to access the other one, you know, the other one can't. So, I'm not sure how, you know, you guys vacating that and selling it off to each of us, you know, benefits, because if, if, if one opposes the other one accessing it and using it, then it's kind of a moot point. And, you know, I would, you know, I would, you know, propose that, you know, rather this be used as their main access to, you know, their structure that they use, which makes more sense, you know, an access off of Brooklyn Avenue there. You know, that, that doesn't affect as many property owners, you know, on this block, you know, by them proposing this as their main access to their property, they're actually affecting 10 total property owners, okay, to circle around, come down Brooklyn Avenue, come down Washington, Washington Street, then access that alley. That, that affects, you know, 10 property owners. They've got a proposal of 200 units, second phase, another 200 units, that's 400 units, assuming there's two cars per unit, that's 800 cars potentially going in and out of that, you know, alley every day, and I have a tenant, you know, that operates out of that, all those buildings there, and they use large trucks for loading and loading, you know, throughout the day, and I can't see how, you know, 400-unit apartment building and these commercial, these commercial units.
Sir, that's time.
That went by quick. Anyway. Yeah, so I propose that, I suggest that, you know, we look at a Brooklyn Avenue entrance instead, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have your emails
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that you've got the letters from my
We do, thank you. That's in our, the staff report. Does anyone else wish to speak on the alley vacation? I want to redirect us to consider that, what we're considering right here is vacating the alley, which is the yellow and green on the picture that's on the wall. Any other comments? No. I'm gonna close the public comment and give you two minutes to respond to the public comment you just heard, if you want to.
I, I think there's a misunderstanding about how the parking for these buildings actually work. 1050 Washington, without this ramp, well, it's, it's parking will all be accessed from South Washington Street. And, and in fact, the only difference between the alley solution and the alternative solution is that the ramp will go inside the building rather than outside of it. So we're, we're not mitig, we don't have any way of mitigating the, the flow of traffic under 1050 Washington under the approved, you know, planned development scheme that we've, that we've, that we have. The, 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 half the parking on 269 Brooklyn is coming from Brooklyn. It's, the, the access, the, the main level comes from the Brooklyn side. So we're only talking about an additional, I don't know, 60 cars or something that are actually gonna be, now be diverted down the alley or down South Washington to the alley. And in fact, we can actually use the alley for our parking access as well, if it's public, so.
And I spent some time with Jason trying to kind of explain, like, we can use the alley for access whether or not it was owned because of its public right of way. And so, the actual flow of traffic doesn't change. It, it will be impactful, we understand that, but we're not debating the, the traffic, it's just the alleyway. And as far as his concern about ownership or use, we'd be happy to do something conditional that we give him access as we've spoken to him, to be able to use it for a second story in perpetuity that's recorded on the deed that we can't, we're happy to do that to, to benefit him and kind of appease his concerns.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're gonna go into executive session right now, which means you can ask a question if you have to. Yes, you may.
So, I have a question. I think that the person commented who owns the property, sorry, already. The, the matter is, the city does divide it in half and sell him his half, and how are you gonna use it if it's, if he owns half of it and won't let you?
We were proposing that it, we have a shared use agreement from the get-go, so that it's defined.
It would definitely be a civil matter that they would have to determine between the two parties. So it would be a civil matter between the two parties, they would have to make some sort of agreement in order to do what they're talking about, because it is offered to, each side gets half. They don't have to buy, doesn't have to buy his half, he just has the ability to.
Okay.
And that's only along his frontage, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I, I, I want to point out real quick, there, what we're considering is the alley vacation, and that's, that's the extent of what we're considering, we're also not making the decision, we're recommending to the city council whether we recommend that they vacate this alley, or recommend that they don't, or recommend they do with, with conditions. Also, there are seven, seven? Factors that we have to consider, eight factors we have to consider. And the analysis from the staff is that all of these comply. The consideration for abutting properties is if they intend to build a garage requiring access from the property, if they've already made an application for a building permit to do that, if construction has been done within 12 months of the building permit, so there are really specific considerations that we made concerning abutting properties. So, and in, in my reading of the staff report, this alley vacation complies with this, I mean, the, the thing that we're looking at is this wide. And my reading is that it complies. Senator, Senator.
I'm going to, uh,
Quite a
I'm going to
A promotion!
Push back on that a little bit.
Good promotion.
So, I've often considered alley vacations, lack of use when the alley has been blocked by previous people, that, that saying it suffers from lack of use is like a nonsensical thing, of course it does, because it's, it was used to store bumpers and blocked with the fence. So of course nobody's using it, and I don't consider that a, God, my brain is not working at the moment. I don't consider that like something that we should allow to be considered as lack of use. And when I look at urban design, actually, considering what, yeah, I think this is an integral piece to potential urban design. I think that if, you know, especially if, what Commissioner Shear said, the beginning of the alley, you only get half of it. It's, it's unusable for what you're proposing, and maybe you work it out, but maybe you don't. And that this can continue to be an access point to your, to your buildings, but people can also walk on it. I mean, I have an alley all throughout, there's alleys all throughout my neighborhood, and cars drive on them and people walk on them. So it is, I think, actually, a important urban design factor here, that the continuation of the alley does serve for urban design that we can see right in front of us. So I, I'm looking at it slightly differently in that I don't think it's meeting A or C in the standards of analysis, and would warrant a negative recommendation to the city council.
Yeah.
The policy considerations are, one policy consideration is required. Not all four. Just FYI.
I was just gonna say, in terms of urban design, I also think that I, I, I think we, I, I would like to steer away more from like creating these massive blocks, and I think that you know, we have so much emphasis on trying to put mid-block walkways back into places. I hesitate to get rid of ones that are built in, so.
Thank you.
Well, if we want to go further, public safety, I don't see how this has been a public safety issue, given that it's been blocked off and stacked with bumper cars, and how anybody's been dealing with that as a public safety issue, I don't think it's been a problem, and community purpose. I think we have a lot of problems that aren't, aren't easily addressed with the fact that we have part of the property owner that doesn't wish it to be vacated. I don't, and I don't think restricting general public from this potential urban design element is in the best interest of this project or the city, so I think I can make a statement for all four of those factors that it's not meeting.
Is it helpful if we offered public access however?
No, sir. This is not open forum.
Sorry.
And we merely make a recommendation to the city council, we're not the ultimate deciders on this, so they, they will decide what they think is best. That is something you can bring up to them when this gets before them.
Amy, I'm sorry, Bishop, are you, are you making a motion?
I think Commissioner Krasik? Because if we're done discussing, I will attempt to make a motion. Will you open up either the motion or the standards? Okay, you've got the motion, then let me get back to the standards. Can reference them, one second, please.
You have to have both at the same time.
I see, I had them, but now I don't know where they went. Okay. Okay. This is where I got Yeah. Okay. Sorry, can you? Okay, so this is her PLN PCM 2024-00811. Based on the findings listed in the staff report, the information presented and the input received during the public hearing, I move that the planning commission forward a recommendation to the city council to deny the request to vacate the alley located at 269 West Brooklyn Avenue for, for the following reasons. It does not satisfactorily meet the standards of analysis, A, lack of use, given that it has been physically blocked off, which presented, or, which resulted in the lack of use. B, public safety, considering it has been blocked off and stacked with bumpers, that it also eliminated any use, so therefore, there's no public safety issue that's occurred. C, urban design, this public alleyway actually presents a very important and positive urban design element to the future development of these parcels. And D, community purpose, that this, sorry, now I can't read. That this alleyway should be open to the general public, given its access to the future locally-preferred track station.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Barry, and a second from Commissioner Mike Christensen. Any discussion to the motion? Okay. Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows?
I will also vote yes.
So that is unanimous to make a positive recommendation to the city council.
Incorrect.
Incorrect, I'm sorry, to make a negative recommendation for the alley vacation to the city council. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Barry, for working on the standards for that motion, I appreciate that. I do appreciate that. All right, now we're on the last item of our agenda, which is a rezone at approximately 273 East, 800 South. The outcomes on this application are that we can recommend to the city council approval or denial, or approval with conditions. The planner is Cassie Younger.
There we go.
And now, yeah.
Okay. There we go, all right. All right. I'm here to present the zoning map amendment at 273 East, 800 South. The applicant Harold Woodruff, on behalf of First Step House, is proposing to rezone the property from institutional to RMF 45, which is a moderate-to-high-density multifamily zone. This rezone is requested in order to build deeply affordable housing on the property. They have submitted plans with their rezone application, but just keep in mind that this is a zoning map amendment application, so they would not be bound to these exact plans. They are proposing 34 one-bedroom apartments available to those making 30% or less of the area median income, and supportive services would be available on-site, like tenants' rights education, case management, and referrals to off-site programs if necessary. This would be an independent living house, and these services would be completely voluntary to the residents. The Central City Future Land Use Plan identifies this property as remaining institutional. Typically, an applicant would need a general plan amendment application to accompany the map amendment. Our new general plan amendment process states that a plan that provides affordable housing that is consistent with any affordable housing plan adopted by the city does not need to apply for the general plan amendment process. Providing deeply affordable housing is supported by plans and policies in Plan Salt Lake Housing SLC and Thriving in Place. The site currently has a vacant building on it, which was previously used as an office and meeting hall for the Disabled American Veterans Organization. Single-family homes abut the site to the north and west of the property. The site is surrounded by a mix of residential zones, including residential business along 800 South, RMF 35 to the north and east, and RMF 45 across the street to the south. There are a variety of housing types in the area, including senior living apartments to the south, and a mix of apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes on the block. The site also has a variety of transit options available, including two high-frequency bus routes, tracks about .6 miles away, and numerous bike lanes on the surrounding streets. This is a Venn diagram comparing the land uses of the two zones. The primary reason for the rezone request is that construction of a new multifamily building is not allowed within the institutional zone. Multifamily is only allowed when utilizing the adaptive reuse process for the existing building. The institutional zone is used for a variety of community uses, such as hospitals, museums, community centers, and schools, but does not offer a lot of permitted residential uses. The RMF 45 zone would limit the use of this zone to primarily residential ones, but allow the construction of the desired affordable housing. The following table compares the development standards for each zone. The institutional zone offers somewhat greater setbacks and smaller builder, buildable area coverage than RMF 45. It should be noted that the planning division is currently considering combining the RMF 35 and RMF 45 zone. The planning commission is scheduled to have a work session on this proposal early next year. Possible changes could include allowing additional height with zoning incentives for affordable housing, and addition of design standards for all buildings, like building materials and transparency requirements. Staff has received a lot of public input on this application. Some residents have been in support of the affordable housing offered and of the First Step House organization, and many residents have stated their concerns about safety, parking, proximity to the abutting single-family homes, and a high concentration of affordable housing and supportive services in the neighborhood. The Central City Community Executive Board also expressed these concerns with the project, stating that Central City has taken on the burden of these projects, which has created a less safe environment for the residents and the populations for which these services aim to help. Overall, the plan does align with our amendment standards and multiple general plans, so staff has recommended to approve the request with the condition that the applicant and to enter a a development agreement that would guarantee the housing on-site to those with 30% or below.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to make a presentation? You have 10 minutes if you want to do that. You can come up to the... Maybe we have questions.
Should we sit here?
Yeah.
We announce your names, and then you can start your presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Is this turned on?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cassie did a great job reviewing our project. She actually hit points that I was going to make, so I won't take up all your time to repeat those. We would like to make just a few additional points. As was noted, we have met with the community council, and I think some of their members have actually toured some First Step properties. We are appreciative of their input and their concerns. We will certainly take those into account if this project proceeds. As far as the review of comments from the different departments of the city, the only ones that really raised a red flag for me was the fire department. And I have met with Doug Bateman, and we've actually entered into an agreement that will resolve all of the issues that they've listed. Basically, we're going to reinforce our driveway to support their trucks and increase the density of our fire sprinkling. The police, we actually spoke with them at the community council meeting, and this property that is kind of the odd shape back, I guess, has been a concern to the police and the neighbors, and a lot more of an issue than I even realized, homeless people sleeping back there, drug issues and other illegal activities. We will make special attention to deal with this. We will only allow one way in to that back area, which is basically up the driveway and sidewalk past the manager's office, and we will provide cameras back there so that this is monitored 24/ day. One of the neighbors have asked us to push the picnic pavilion a little farther to the east, and we're certainly happy to do that. Just quickly, what this project is not, this is not a drug and rehab-type facility. It's not a halfway house. It is mostly family housing with supportive services, and it will have full-time, 24-hour-a-day management, as opposed to a project similar that was owned by a private developer. Would likely at best only have part-time management for this few apartments. This will allow the neighbors to have an actual contact if they have an issue with a resident or something that is going on with, on the property. The issue of parking came up a couple times in the letters that were in our packet. Our project does meet the parking ordinances of Salt Lake City. The real situation is very few of these people actually have cars or can afford to maintain cars. Most of them have bicycles, and I'm seeing that a lot of them are using these electric scooters now. So I really don't think there's going to be any issue with parking. I was kind of intrigued by some of the comments in the letters. Maybe this existing building could be used for retail or a community center, which, you know, are great ideas. The situation with that building is that in the 1950s, it was used for a gas station, and petroleum products were allowed to leak into the soil, and so the soils around that building and under that building are contaminated. As part of this project, First Step House is committed to actually tear down the building, remove the soils, and do whatever's necessary to clean up the site. It really should have been done when they built that building, but, you know, that was a different time. It's, First Step House is committing like $350,000 to make that happen, so it's no small project. I actually have an office that I've been in for 24 years on 8th South that is within 300 feet of this site. I have a lot of sympathy for the neighbors. I agree, maybe this area hasn't been treated by, properly by some government agencies or entities. When the Women's Center was built on 7th South, just off of State Street, the whole character of the neighborhood changed, and not for the better. When I come to work during the warmer months of the year, I often find people sleeping on my porch, and, you know, I probably wouldn't really mind it if I didn't have to clean up after them. That's the real issue. We want this project to actually be part of the neighborhood. Most of the residents here become long-term residents, and we want them to take part in the community and actually get to know their neighbors, as opposed to the Women's Center that has just dropped into the community with no regard for what is really happening around it. We believe our project furthers the goals of Salt Lake City's affordable housing plans. I'm obviously biased being right there, but I've seen these projects clean up and really help a neighborhood. Just the fact that you have ownership with somebody that's there 24 hours a day and caring about the area is a big plus. Certainly, there's concern about the height of the building. We have pushed it as far as we can to the east, and it is on a corner of the intersection where I think a little more height affects fewer people. But to keep this somewhat brief, with me today is Ashley Grant. She's with Blue Line Development, and her background is in housing and regulation and the Fair Housing Act. And also with me is Sean McMillan. He is the executive director of First Step.
Just so you know, there's two more minutes left on your 10-minute presentation.
Great. So we're done? Oh, two more minutes.
I didn't necessarily want to add anything. I just wanted to be available to answer any questions. Many of the questions that we've gotten from the neighbors have been about who's the population, how were they selected, they're citizens, they're people who live in Salt Lake City, who have struggled to maintain housing, and we're providing a housing option that wraps services around. It is housing. It is not a treatment program, not a mental health group home. Happy to answer any questions that may arise. Okay, thank you. Ashley, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to add that the services for the residents are voluntary, so they don't, it's not a condition of their housing at the property.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions at this time?
I do. That was, I just want to just be very clear. So anybody can apply to rent your apartment. It's not necessarily coming from a population internally that you're then placing in this housing.
Correct. Anyone in the community who meets the eligibility criteria can, so they could come from, well, anywhere.
Sure, that's, obviously meet the eligibility. I wanted to specifically clarify that.
Actually, very few First Step House patients, so individuals in our treatment programs qualify.
And then my other question is, in the staff report, one of the comments was that the police department recommended that you fence off that back patio slash pavilion so that it's not confused as like a public space. You just mentioned that you're willing to move it a little further to the east based on a neighborhood's request. What about fencing it off so that it's not confused to be a public space? Are you open to that? Is that something you see doable in the design?
We intend to fence the entire property, and we were going to, right now, people that live in the apartments to the east cut across this property on their way to 7-Eleven. We were going to add fencing to force them to actually stay on the sidewalk and go around the property. We could, not quite sure how we would fence off that back part. We could fence off the picnic pavilion and only allow access at certain times of the day.
It was just a recommendation from the police department that was listed in the staff report, so I just wanted to know if that, you considered that, not that you have to do it. So that was my question.
Yes, we have considered, I've actually had discussions with the, I can't remember their name, some officers that were there at the community council meeting, and we do have parking that goes back there, but we'd be happy to fence off the picnic pavilion or whatever we could to satisfy any concerns of the police.
Thank you. We're going to move to the public comment portion of this meeting. Is there anyone here from the Central City Community Council to speak? There is. You have five minutes to speak as a representative of a recognized community organization. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jenny Starley, and I'm the vice chair of the Central City Neighborhood Council. So I'm here to respectfully express our board's opposition to the proposed rezoning for the First House project. While we acknowledge the need for permanent supportive housing in our city, we believe this location is suitable for several reasons. So first, the safety concerns in our area. The neighborhood surrounding the proposed site is not a safe and supportive environment for vulnerable residents. Toffler Park and River Rock Apartments, both nearby, are known for open drug use. In fact, the Salt Lake City Police Department classified this area as a crime hotspot in 2023. This environment poses significant risks to individuals in recovery programs, exposing them to temptations and negative influences. Our residents deserve housing in a location that fosters their well-being and recovery, not one that undermines it. Second, Central City is already very much overburdened. Our neighborhood hosts a disproportionately high concentration of homeless services, mental health facilities, and low-income housing compared to other parts of Salt Lake City. This is evidenced in city planning documents, including the 2023 Homeless Resource Center text amendment, which shows the dense clustering of such services in Central City. These resources have strained our parks, our streets, our public spaces, affecting both real and perceived safety. The ongoing imbalance drives families away and prevents long-term neighborhood stabilization. Third, economic impacts and concentrated poverty. The census tract is the second poorest in Salt Lake County, with a median household income of just over $28,000, according to the 2020 census. So ever approved, three out of the four corners at this intersection would become deeply low-income housing developments. Such concentration of poverty increases associated social challenges and hinders economic revitalization. Retail families, retail, family-sized, or forced housing would better serve the neighborhood's long-term health and balance. Finally, lost opportunity for community-focused development. So at that intersection, there's approximately 18,000 annual average daily traffic reported by UDOT. So there's 18,000 on average cars passing that intersection daily. This site offers immense potential for retailer-mix-use development. It's walkable. It has vibrant retail spaces that are vital. We'll walkable, we want walkable, vibrant retail spaces, because it's vital to making our Salt Lake City neighborhood livable and attractive, and committing this prominent corner to a single-use, low-income housing project would lock it into decades of unrealized potential for economic growth and neighborhood improvement. And that's the big part I really would like to focus on. This is such, this area could really turn our neighborhood around, and, you know, while we deeply respect the work of First Step House, I was very privileged to be a part of a tour last weekend. It's an amazing program on all ends, but in this specific location, I don't think it's going to help our neighborhood and what we want for our neighborhood. So I want to emphasize that the Central City Neighborhood Council Board supports efforts to increase permanent supportive housing, but believes it must be distributed equitably across the city to avoid overburdening neighbors like ours, neighborhoods like ours. We urge you to reject this rezon request unless a proposal aligns with the long-term interests of Salt Lake City residents, including projects like forced housing, family-sized housing, or retail spaces. On another small note, I actually own a home that is adjacent to the proposed property site, and, like I said, I deeply respect their mission. I do a lot of service work for those experiencing homelessness. I think it's great. I just don't think the location is great. On a personal note, the four-story building is entirely out of scale with our historic neighborhood of single-family homes. Most of the homes on my street are over 110 years old. So for neighbors like me, and my neighbors that are here tonight, that four-story property will overshadow our backyard. It'll completely erase our backyard privacy 100%. It will almost entirely block the sunlight for our gardens and destroy the views of our eastern mountain ranges. And these were all factors that were really important to me when I purchased my home, and it's hit time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I have a comment card from Travis Starley, who says, disproportionate share of facilities serving vulnerable populations in this area. While this proposal may technically meet RMF 45 regulations, it fails to address its compatibility with the neighborhood, impacts on safety, and strain on resources. The property will overshadow adjacent properties, erase backyard privacy, block sunlight for gardens, and destroy views of the eastern mountains, all factors that influence many of us to live here. I have a comment card from Daniel Mealy, and then Lauren, go ahead, you're up, and then Lauren, and then Cindy Cromer. You'll have two minutes each. State your name with your comment.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Mealy. I also own a property that is adjacent to this proposal. First off, I have to thank you. Thank you for your time and for the effort. I would not want to do this. It seems like every decision you have to make, make someone happy makes a lot of people not happy, right? But it's because the decisions that you're making completely shape the future of those areas and the future of what's going on. This decision that you'll be making here will be doing that exact same thing. I oppose this decision, and I hope you will too. Your decision will help shape whether my neighborhood has a chance to recover and reform, or it gets pushed further into poverty. Being mentioned before, we are a pretty low-income housing area anyway. In fact, we're the second lowest-income housing area for Salt Lake City, and that's before this housing complex will be put into there. But I also oppose it for a number of other reasons, a bit more practical. One, we have an oversaturation of public services in this area. Two, it doesn't quite match, well, it doesn't match at all, the proposal doesn't match the existing surrounding zoning. It might be better, sir, for our neighborhood to do that. And I think that this section of our town can both accomplish the goals of the city, which are outlined, I think in, I think it's General Directive like 19, and also in the Salt Lake City Housing Program, like six-year plan. Salt Lake City Housing Program, like six-year plan, for providing affordable housing, but it doesn't have to be limited to their ideas. We have a methadone clinic within a block. We have the River Rock, the largest subsidized housing facility with crime. We also have the women's shelter right there. This is an overconcentration of these resources, and it's really detrimental to my community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can we hear a comment from Lauren Mealy? Opposed.
I didn't need to comment.
Okay. Thank you, noted. Thank you.
My name is still Cindy Cromer. I want to compliment the Central City Board for all the work that they put into their carefully crafted letter. I'm not going to come out against housing that's at 30% of AMI. I can't do that as a landlord that offers modestly-priced housing. But I want to convey to you how complicated this is in terms of land use. So unfortunately, Central City, especially this part of Central City, has far more than its share of deeply affordable housing. You've already heard that. Think about the complaints you've heard about North Temple, which are likely to turn around because of the power district. And 84% of the housing in Central City is rental. That can only work, from my perspective as a community builder, if a very high percentage of those renters stay a long time, and that's not what's happening. So I have no problem with renters in addition to homeowners. It's just that they got to stay put. They have to have roots. And we don't have that with our renter population, especially along 400 South. Now, I want you to look at the abutting RB zone. We know, based on the zoning consolidation project, that that's going to be replaced by something, and it's likely to be more intense. And maybe that will respond to the interest in more retail, but we don't know what that's going to look like right now, so we've got more ambiguity. The property to the north is a single-family residence, and this project will abut that single-family residence on two sides. One will be the building, and the other will be the garbage dumpsters, and that is truly a burden. And I have a couple of other points that I'll catch you later.
Catch us later on those. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this application? Go ahead, state your name, and you'll have two minutes.
All right, I'm Josh Schmidt, and I own a house on 8th South, which is a few blocks away from where the proposal is. And so what I'm trying to understand, I guess, is the big why of why this is such a big thing to put into this community, as the points have already been brought up about the building doesn't match the existing hold homes. That is one of my favorite things about my house. I love the look of it. I love all of 8th South and what it looks like for the old style. Also, is 9th South, as 9th South is growing, this isn't going to impact and make it a better area, as everyone stated. But I want to really kind of point to what was brought up, is that this is for longer-term renting. And so I'm trying to figure out, why is staff involved if it's low-income and there's longer-term rental? Those things don't match to me, and I'd like that to be addressed, of how that's benefiting us and why there's a staff to be there. And the parking concerns, and it's parking is 21 units for 34. If there's staff there, if there's going to be any visitors there, it's already a burden for parking as it is, and then that's just going to exasperate it. And I really just want to focus on the point they brought up earlier, is if your backyard is there, you've lost the sight of why you lived there, to have a four-story building blocking your view of the mountains, the sun, and your gardens, and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this application? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment, period. To reiterate what I heard, there were concerns about a concentration of services, concerns about the existing status or condition of the neighborhood. Those are the things, basically, that I heard. You can have a couple of minutes to respond to the public comment if you'd like it.
Yes, maybe Sean and Ashley, if you would want to answer some of those. I do agree with a lot of what they said, yes, I'm sure. 800 South is a busy street. I see that every day. I'm sure there's a lot of low-income apartments around that. I know of several myself. I don't think this project is going to affect the economics of the area very much. Either way, whether it was a private development or owned by First Step. And Sean, would you like to?
Sure, thank you. So, and I heard a couple of things too, and one is, one is that folks who struggle with a multitude of mental health conditions, disabilities, live in the community already. You know, not just this community, but all communities, and there's risks for exposure to things that might be triggers in all of those situations. And folks who have got some sort of service that wrap around them are known to, whether that's in an outpatient setting or in a residential treatment setting, folks are riding the bus. Folks who have got some sort of support that touches them stay stable. Again, to go back to, this is permanent supportive housing, permanent as in forever, supportive as in supportive services are onsite to wrap around the individual as an amenity. It's not a condition of tendency that individuals engage with those supportive services. They're simply there. They will proactively engage if they see an individual struggling in some way. To the more specific question, why this location? One, it was for sale, and that's the biggest thing that we run into when we're trying to develop affordable housing for services, for individuals who, for vulnerable populations. Number two was the new hospital on the old Sears block. The folks that we serve are individuals who often have complicating medical conditions and are seeing care providers at hospitals all the time. And so proximity to that hospital was important. There's a project that we're doing over off of North Temple, the same reason. There is a clinic over there that folks would be able to access quite easily that serves the particular population. So I get that folks are scared, you know? It's a strange population. These are folks who, you know, some of us walk across the street because we don't want to have to be next to it, you know? And I get, I just get it. And what I predict, because what I see with our other projects, is that these look like other apartment buildings in any other neighborhood. It doesn't feel like something different than what already exists in anyone's neighborhood. Nevertheless, I still get it. I did want to make the comment, in PSH projects, permanent supportive housing projects, housing stability is in the neighborhood of 85%. So people get stable, they don't move on, they stay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we're on the executive session, so the commissioners can discuss this project, ask questions if you need to, and entertain motions.
So this is a zoning change amendment. The text of it is to change the zoning. Does the text of this amendment include that this has to be an affordable housing project?
I believe that's one of the conditions that we've put on there.
It's one of the conditions of the, okay, so this project, we are recommending, in addition to the zoning change, a development agreement.
They have to do a zoning map amendment if they don't do affordable.
If they don't do the affordable housing.
And they haven't.
So, but we're not, are we specifying what kind of affordable housing? 30% AMI?
So with zoning amendments now, there's that provision that requires an applicant to submit a community benefit. One of those is affordable housing. And so they submit that proposal, and the way that process works is that it's enshrined through a development agreement at whatever parameters are agreed ultimately.
Okay, thank you. Just confused. Well, I'm very sensitive to the issues of being impactful in the neighborhood. And on the other hand, this is the property that's available to these folks, and I think the issue of needing this kind, this is exactly the kind of housing that we need. The permanent supported housing is exactly the kind, and hopefully, the issue may be the safety of the people who live here, but they probably themselves are not going to be the ones causing the trouble. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this.
I appreciate you coming to make public comment in such a long meeting, and I think that we all feel sympathetic, that you love your neighborhood and you want it to be nice. Also, that we, not we, I'll just speak for myself. I understand that the solution to homelessness is housing, and we need more of that, and if it's in your backyard, that feels different than if it's in your city, because I know we need it in our city, and that's the consideration, that's the issue that's in front of us right
I'm ready to make a motion. So this is for PLN PCM 2024-01153. Based on the information presented and in discussion, I move that the commission recommend that the city council adopt the zoning map amendment.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Krasik and a second by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, let's, Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
And I also will vote yes, so that's a unanimous positive, unanimous vote for positive recommendation to the city council to adopt the zoning map amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that was the last item on our agenda. This is the last meeting of the year for the Planning Commission. Our next meeting is January 8, 2025. Thank you.
Visited Salt Lake in the winter of 1992, answering the Christmas time letter of a boy whose father was dying. The Flash made an appearance here in the 1980s, fighting off the villainous Kilgore on the salt flats after the destruction of Salt Lake